Today to ask for your guidance and wisdom. Lord, we think of our armed services often and we pray for their safety. Yesterday, especially thinking of the Army as they celebrate our two hundred and forty-sixth anniversary in protecting our freedoms. Lord, this Sunday, we remember Juneteenth. This is a day that's generally held to recognize the end of slavery. We thank you for the end of slavery. May we unite to foster racial, cultural community harmony. May we cling to you when our differences threaten to divide us. Father, we are all equal in your eyes. So let us not create strife to tear apart what you desire us to be. It is good we are not one person, but one people. Each of us are important and play a significant role for the good of society. May we use those towns to glorify you. We pray we will always show your love. Let us communicate with each other with respect and dignity. In these things, we humbly pray your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna convene the commissioners' public meeting to ask for approval for the minutes of the previous meeting. On their side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry on. At this time, we'll have public comment on agenda items only. Now, we have a very large agenda today, and this is only on agenda items only. Okay, we want everyone to be heard today. We go through lunch, two o'clock, three o'clock, and we're here to listen to everybody. Respect everybody's comments, we wanna hear everybody. So we just ask if you're patient with us, and we can get to the county business, and we'll be glad to hear it.
You know what, as a practical matter, I think it's great that people are gonna sit through a county agenda because there's some incredibly exciting things on the agenda, and it helps us to be engaged as citizens to at least sort of learn what the county does. So I think it's gonna be a good, when I looked at the agenda, there were a lot of good things on it.
Thank you. Okay, hearing them on the public agenda comment, for agenda items only, moving on.
So, six, one point six, we have Jennifer Wilson from the First Community Foundation to speak about Ryder Park renovations.
Hi.
Thank you.
Am I going here?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, good morning.
Thanks so much.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Jennifer Wilson and the President of First Community Foundation Partnership of Pennsylvania. We are the proud owners of Ryder Park, eight hundred and sixty-seven acre tract of land in Lake Coming County that we, as a nonprofit, own and operate for the enjoyment of our community. We have done so since Mr. Ryder's back in nineteen eighty-eight, when he gifted this property to the community. We are the protector of many legacies at FCFP as we are really built on an endowment where donors have left dollars to support community needs for more than a century. So we have a fund that supports the operations of Ryder Park. Mr. Ryder left a small fund upon his passing, and then the foundation, over time, has engaged in some opportunity to endow the park, and we operate it three hundred and sixty-five days a year. While it's privately owned by us, we operate it very much like a public park. There are over ten miles of trails, and people go and enjoy hiking, bird watching, trail running, mountain biking, a variety of recreational activities, as well as a place for respite and reflection. It's really a beautiful place for the citizens of Lake Coming County. So the foundation spends about a hundred thousand dollars annually to operate the park. That handles all of our maintenance, as well as some staff that we have for the safety of the people that enjoy it. We estimate that we have over twenty thousand visitors on an annual basis, and that number only increased during COVID. So that was from a traffic study that we did several years ago. But throughout the pandemic, we kept the park open, and it was a place where people could go and be outside at a time when many of us were inside. So the board has decided to embark on an initiative to expand access at Ryder Park. So what we'd like to do is we have about a half a million dollar project that we have voted on that we're going to expand our road, a little widening of access to get into the park. If you've ever been there, it's a little tight, and parking is very limited. So we're trying to put in a loop road that will add more than thirty parking spots, including some ADA accessible spots, a new picnic pavilion that will also have ADA capability in a tree of, a canopy of trees that will allow those to go up and enjoy picnics and certainly time as a group or even individually. So we have provided some funding as the foundation. We're also applying for some grants, and we're coming to the county as we think this is an opportunity for the county to partner with FCFP on this initiative. So we'd like to ask if you would consider, as you support nonprofit organizations, if you would consider a hundred thousand dollar grant to FCFP towards our work. This is the first phase of funding that we're looking to do at the park, and this will create the infrastructure. So this loop road will allow better access for buses. Right now, it's very hard to get our school buses up there. We've done some open houses where we've had as many as seven hundred people in the park that we've done free events for the community, but it's difficult to get buses up and down that road. And so this loop would allow better access, it would allow our public schools, elementary, middle schools, high school even, our colleges to better utilize the park for programming. There's a ton of, in addition to the recreational opportunities, there's some great educational opportunities at Ryder Park, including work that we've done to utilize a water harvesting system, to handle the watering of our plants. We have composting toilet facilities, and we recently installed solar panels on our maintenance and have electricity for the first time in the park. So I think there's a lot to learn, a lot to engage with the public at the park, and I think this is a unique opportunity for the county to support our work.
Great, thank you. Any questions? So you're looking just for the public's information. You'd be looking for money, for example, from the Act thirteen Legacy Fund, which is not taxpayer, real estate taxes, but which is money that the county got through gas drilling that is specifically for parks.
Yes.
Okay, just for the public.
Yeah, and we're unique in that we're not a publicly owned park, but we very much operate like one. So we are open three hundred and sixty-five days a year, dawn to dusk, and we do that for the public, but it is owned by the foundation.
I'm sort of curious, how many here have ever been to Ryder Park? Look at those hands.
Oh, that's great.
I wanna thank the foundation for taking that on because it's absolutely the kind of asset and gem that we want in the community to create a quality of life that makes people say, hey, I wanna live in Lake Coming County.
Yeah, and we feel very strongly about it. And I'll be honest, you know, for a number of years, it was a challenge for us to determine how we were going to maintain the park, how we were gonna fund the park in perpetuity. And we did have an opportunity through the Marcella Shale Exploration that we were able to enter into an agreement that was non-developmental and protected the land. There was no surface impact on our land at all, but it was able to create an endowment that now allows us to have staff, that allows us to maintain that park, keep it safe, and keep it accessible to the people, which was always our goal, and really fitting as a protection of Mr. Ryder's legacy and what he had hoped for the people here. Yes, your packet, this is just, yeah, this is all for you, drawings, map.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'll read that, thanks.
Up next, we're presenting a proclamation for Waste and Recycling Workers Week. And we do have Jason Yorssen. Commissioner Maravito is going to read that proclamation.
Proclamation, Waste and Recycling Workers Week. Whereas Lake Coming County celebrates the week of June seventeenth as Waste and Recycling Workers Week, and whereas according to the Center for Disease Control, the eradication of many diseases in the Western world is due in large part to higher public sanitation standards resulting from effective garbage disposal. And whereas the men and women employed by Lake Coming County, as well as private refuse collection and hauling industry workers in the community, make significant contributions to the safety, health, and welfare of citizens. And whereas the proper collection and disposal of waste and recyclables is vital to preventing disease, litter, and dump heaps. And whereas refuse haulers contribute to a tidy and clean community. And whereas the county of Lake Coming values and celebrates hundreds of trash collectors, dumpster haulers, sewage workers, street cleaners, and all others employed in the sanitation industry to serve residents and local businesses. Now therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners for the County of Lake Coming, hereby proclaim June seventeenth through June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, as Waste and Recycling Workers Week. Signed, Lake Coming County Commissioner Scott Elmetsker, Chairman, Tony Armisser, Vice Chairman, Richard Maravito, Secretary.
Jason?
Yeah.
They've got his phone?
Yeah. Very well, thank you Commissioners for recognition for our staff and for all of our license qualities who, every day, in and out, regardless of pandemics or whatever situation, make sure that the streets are clean, recycling is picked up. The garbage, which people don't realize how much they generate every day. I think the last study, the state of PA alone averaged somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty, eight point seven million tons. So you're looking at thirteen hundred and some tons per person in the state. You know, as a day, we wake up, we produce four to five pounds of waste. On a scale of almost fifty percent of that is normally recyclable. Somebody has to handle all that stuff. When you have collection, garbage collection and processing is the top five, it's fifth in the most dangerous jobs and occupations. I think it's roughly thirty-five deaths per hundred thousand employees. Mostly or typically collection fatalities, but we do experience landfill fatalities as well. It's definitely essential programming for institutions and for society as a whole. So we appreciate that. We, Thursday morning, will be getting out picky buns to all of our haulers and our employees, and we'll be having a lunch with employees that day as well. So we do appreciate it, Commissioner.
Thank you, Jason. We saw what happened during the pandemic with all our recyclables and how they pile up in our garages and basements and how important it was for our recycling crews to be there. And we wanna thank you and your staff for their service. It is a dangerous job, and at the same time, it's a thankless job. The sites that are out there, please respect them. We ask the public to please respect them. We just had one removed up at Fairfield because they were dropping toilets and sinks. Somebody's dropped a windshield up there, and township supervisors retired paying expenses of having somebody else's garbage hauled right. So they just discontinued their site. Unfortunately, because... Thank you, Commissioner.
Do a fantastic job over there, Jason. And it's nice for us to attend this on Top of the Hill Meeting every Thursday. They're very informative, and it's incredible the amount of garbage that is dumped in our site from Field eleven to now, Field twelve is coming. So keep up the great work, and we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Yorssen, I think that it'd be helpful to just give some information to the public, too. Many of you may not realize that the landfill puts about one point nine million dollars into our general fund. Is that, is that on target, Mr. Yorssen, one point nine?
Yes, sir.
That means that one point nine million of property taxes that people normally would have to pay is supplanted by the money we make on the landfill. And the landfill is not a hundred percent county waste. It's probably, Mr. Yorssen, about twenty percent or thirty percent?
Roughly, Lake Coming County, roughly twenty-seven, twenty percent of our makeup.
Okay, so, so we're putting thirty percent of the waste in there. We're beginning a hundred percent of the money from it, and it reduces the tax burden. But I think what you said, Mr. Yorssen, is really important. Too often, we take for granted things that happen in our lives. We put the can out, somebody takes it, goodbye, you never see it, you don't worry about it. One of the things that's exciting, it's actually interesting to go to the landfill. And Mr. Yorssen will welcome tours for kids or for anybody who wants to go and see. And it's really important for our young people to get an education, partly so they don't make some of the mistakes that we made because we didn't know whether it was burning plastic, as we used to do. I remember when I first came to this community in nineteen eighty-nine, I was so surprised to see people with burner barrels because where I grew up, you couldn't burn it. So, so anyway, Mr. Yorssen, thank you, thank the workers and the staff there, and we appreciate all you do.
Excellent, thank you.
So, next is the informational series, which Director Yorssen is also going to speak about. This is our county departments and what they do for you, and he's gonna talk about the RMS services.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioners, as we've done in all your agendas, we've covered the departments. Today is my honor to talk about one subject you know I'm passionate about, and that's the employees of RMS. We're made up of the landfill, recycling center, and transfer station on Third Street. We currently have TDA of sixty-seven employees. We operate Monday through Saturday, which we don't have an eight-to-five job. We cover a lot more than eight hours a day. You have a lot of work being done in the early morning, in the dark, doing greasing to dirt works and so forth at night, trying to get things prepped for the next day. Just to give you some ideas, RMS Waymasters, who are frontline employees, handled a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven tickets last year alone. So when a person comes in to the scale, they dump their waste, their recycling, whatever, come back. That's twice. So technically, they've, we've had two hundred and eight thousand roughly people across our scales last year. The Waymasters do an outstanding job, fabulous job. They get the phone calls, their frontline, the phone calls and so forth. And all the residents that come in and are not sure where to go, they guide them and direct them. So I'm very proud of those folks. They come in and people get to see what a facility we are. As you mentioned, Commissioners, you do come over, you get to see weekly the amount of moving parts and pieces we have. Dave Romans, Deputy Director, and myself, we have the greatest staff that we serve in the sense that we don't have to tell them very much, they know what needs to be done. We, we make clear the goals that are given to us by Director McDermott and you, the Board of Commissioners. We also have goals that are outside by state agencies, such as the Department of Fire and Water Protection, which is a heavy regulated environment, landfilling and recycling centers. We have strict guidelines of what we have to adhere to. So our staff understands that, understands wrong. You know, just yesterday, that storm that come through the area, while this might have only lasted twenty, twenty-five minutes, put down an exceptional amount of water. You know, our staff in the middle of the rainstorm has to go around, make sure our drainage ditches are working, our grates are open, make sure there's no runoff that's not appropriate, so forth. There's just a lot going on all the time. I, I, you guys hear it, I tell you all the time about the happenings of the staff and what we get through. It is sometimes challenging to serve and work for the public. We wanna help everyone the best we can. So again, RMS is typically do, we do about two hundred and eighty thousand tons a year in waste, roughly twenty-one tons in recyclables. Recycling market itself is a yo-yo, it's back and forth, and today it's going up. Just so everybody knows, your milk jobs are worth more than your aluminum soda cans or beer cans. That's how crazy the markets are right now. But our staff follow it, try to make sure we do the right thing and market the best we can. Our waste, we're exceeding a ton of garbage per cubic yard in the landfill, which far exceeds industrial standards. In the landfill, we sell airspace. The more with garbage we can get in one cubic yard, the more money we save and create. Also, the longer the life of the landfill exists. So this facility's been in operation since, I believe, nineteen seventy-eight, and that was when landfills were in their infancy. They, there was a lot of regulations that were yet to come on board. So I can't say enough good things about my folks that I work for every day. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jason.
Two point zero accounts payable cash requirements report with Randy Clemens. Randy?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Randy.
I'm here to present the accounts payable cash requirements report for invoices due through six twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, for payment on six sixteen, twenty twenty-one in the amount of six hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Were there any questions this week or comments?
So carry on, thank you, Randy.
One quick comment for the public. So this is literally a single-page, thirty-five-page document of every payment in the six hundred and ninety-three thousand that Ms. Clemens mentioned. And it's been reviewed by her department, by the Controller's Department, to make sure that the money being spent is the money that's been allocated and voted on by the Commissioners. That's what county workers do for you, and they do it every day, in and out.
Okay, thank you.
Three point zero personnel actions with Roxanne Rico and Roxanne is on the line.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Roxanne.
In the Coroner's Office, Mary Louise Powke as a full-time replacement Deputy Coroner at a pay grade seven, eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents an hour, effective June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. In our Maintenance Department, William S. Buck, which is a new position, is a temporary electrician. Pay grade eleven, thirty-five dollars an hour, effective June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. In domestic relations, Jennifer N. Blausch, a full-time replacement clerk three, at a pay grade four, fourteen dollars and nine cents an hour, effective September fifth, twenty twenty-one. In the Treasurer's Office, Mackenzie Bartlow, is a part-time replacement clerk one, not to exceed a thousand hours annually, at a pay grade two, eleven dollars and five cents an hour, effective July twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And finally, also in the Treasurer's Office, Alexis Newcomer, as a part-time replacement clerk one, not to exceed a thousand hours annually, at a pay grade two, eleven dollars and five cents an hour, effective July twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions or comments on these personnel actions? Now, motion, please.
I'll move to approve.
A second. All three, so I, I, so carry on, thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We have one informational item. Gregory Bonzel is here to speak about acknowledging the Conservation District. Will be proposing a RFP.
Morning. Thank you. What I'm here to do today is to present a proposal that the Conservation District will be putting together. I kind of wear two hats at the Conservation District. I'm the manager, and I also serve on the State Envirathon Board. So just to give you a little background, the State Envirathon is an environmental competition for high school students in grades nine through twelve. The way it works is there are local county events. The county winners then go on to a state event. And the state winner then, you know, they receive scholarships and monetary, or monetary prizes, and then go on to a competition that also includes the United States and Canada. So the reason I'm here today is we had a executive director who was on board for thirty-one years, and she retired at the end of this Envirathon season, which just concluded in the end of May. So the way that position works is it's a position that is fully funded through grant, grant funding from DEP, DCNR, a bunch of outside sources. The only problem with the grant is there's really no, the position is not tied to a home. So what this proposal will do, the proposal is asking to bring somebody on board. The title would be Executive Director of the PA Envirathon. So the district would be the host, the employee would be labeled as on the county's books, but it would be budget neutral, there would be no cost, it would be a hundred percent reimbursed through the grants, even including rent, computers, all the supplies that would be needed for the position. So basically, I wanted to present the information today, tell you guys what it's all about, and then come back next meeting, have a vote on it, and see if it's something we'd be interested in. Now, it's one of those things that how do you hire this person, not knowing who the person is, where they're coming from? And basically, what I've been told, being on the board, is they're targeting central Pennsylvania. So, you know, Lake Coming County, we sit pretty here, we can get people from the north, east, west, even some from the south, because I know, I only know of two districts right now that are gonna be hosts. So if we would sign on, we would be the third district. And the hardest part for us, in my opinion, would be finding a desk for them. Everything else will be provided. So I'm gonna leave you guys with the RFP today, so you can read over it. It is a little bit of a struggle because sometimes, you know, you're saying, okay, well, this is a budget-neutral thing, and they're gonna answer to, they have a, they have a separate board, they're gonna answer to the State Envirathon Board. So they are accounting employee, but yet they're not accounting employee. Basically, the county is blow through. You're talking probably about a fifty thousand dollar position. And right now, the way it stands is it's only two years. After two years, the grant expires. If the successful candidate is not a good grant writer, then he or she would be out of a job in two years. So we would no longer be a host, then the RFP would be dissolved, and we'd go back to being business as usual. Any questions?
So, you know, Mr. Bonzel, I sit on the Conservation District Board. And can you talk for just a minute or so about some of the advantages? I mean, we talked about the fact that it makes Lake Coming County a place that has this person here. And events could or could not occur here, but it's one more opportunity to highlight this county as a county where action is happening.
Yeah, basically, you know, every time, since I've been on the board, which has only been about three years, every time you go somewhere, everybody knew the executive director, his name was Laurel. So it's a pretty prestigious thing for a county to have. The only reason Bedford County didn't wanna host again, you know, they hosted for thirty-one years and it worked fine. They did not wanna host because they're losing their building. So because they're losing their building, they're looking for a new building that's gonna be smaller, they won't have the space. I see this as a feather in the hat of Lake Coming County. It's going to bring, it's gonna bring all your directors from Fish and Boat Commission, Gang Commission, DCNR. All those people will be coming here for meetings. My question has always been, there's been two host sites for the Envirathon, Susquehanna University and University of Pitt Johnstown. We've got enough establishments here in Lake Coming County that we, I think we can hold the event here. And then you're talking, like I said, you're about three hundred and eighty-five students, about another hundred and fifty advisors. So you'd be bringing five hundred people to the county every year.
And, and the other thing is that because both DCNR and DEP sponsor it, it moves us into a more, into a positive. They have a positive relationship with us now, but it doesn't hurt to have us doing more things that also enhance that.
Right.
And I think it's because of that positive relationship that they committed to a million dollars in South Williamsport at the Sillendale Park, and we certainly wanna do that. Every opportunity we can work to bring state money into the, into the county.
Correct. Thank you.
Now, we're going to recess the Commissioners' public meeting and move to the public hearing for Lake Coming County zoning ordinance and subdivision and land development ordinance.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Commissioner. It's actually just for the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm here to present two amendments to the Lake Coming County zoning ordinance. These amendments were developed in response to inquiries regarding potential subdivision of an existing shopping center use and to address a recurring issue with existing municipal uses across the county. So, the first amendment is an amendment to our shopping center use, which will allow entertainment uses in shopping centers, and will also allow shopping centers to cross multiple parcels. The amendment will also include supplemental controls to allow zero-foot setbacks along common-party walls, which we also defined later in the ordinance, to require the subdivider to establish agreements to address access and maintenance for structures and required improvements, and to require building codes review and conditional approval based on building permit approval. The amendment was developed in coordination with building codes officials and the Planning Commission. After the amendments had been advertised, it came to PCD's attention through the review of a pending subdivision that the amendment did not address impermeable surfaces percentages and floor area percentages, and we're suggesting the following change to Section thirty-two forty-eight two A of the amendment. It reads as follows, "In addition, calculation of impermeable surfaces percentages and floor area percentages, Section forty-two-ten, under the subsection, shall be based on the totals for all parcels involved in the proposed shopping center use or division." As I mentioned earlier, we're also defining common-party walls as a wall defining, dividing a contiguous building. The second amendment is to our extensions or enlargements of non-conforming uses and structures, and it will allow extensions or enlargements of non-conforming municipal uses and structures to be approved based, to be approved by the zoning administrator through a zoning permit, rather than zoning at hearing board approval. The amendments were reviewed by the County Planning Commission at their March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, and recommended for Commissioner adoption at their April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. The amendments were sent to our municipal partners for the required review process on May fifth of two thousand and twenty-one, and none of the municipalities who responded provided comment on the proposed amendments.
Any questions? No, I want to thank you, Tiffany, for taking the initiative. You saw a problem with the zoning ordinance, it's been an issue for our businesses sometimes, and you took the initiative to move out on it so that the parking, so that these parking and walls could be used, reused, we know that they're empty, so thanks for doing that. How long have you been doing this?
I started January of two thousand and fifteen. So, during the course of my terms, you know, that was one of our biggest programs, to take a look at our zoning ordinance, to look at some of the variants that were requested by the, that were requested by the people, because a variance cost me three hundred dollars. And since you've been on board, and as well as a few other people, we have been scrubbing those losses. We have been trying to make it easier for our developers and people to get permits. And if there are some restrictions, they're well-presented to our Planning Department, and I think you've done a tremendous job, as well as the entire Planning and Zoning Department. Thank you.
Yeah, this, this issue popped up, and we put together this amendment within a week, and we're ready to talk about it with the Planning Commission, their next Funding Commission meeting, so we jumped, jumped right on this as soon as we saw it. I mean, it was a common-sense issue, so we want to see our shopping centers be viable into the future.
Great job, thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
So, we're reconvening the Commissioners' Public Meeting, and we're going to action items.
Here's the Commissioner, you should make sure that there is no comment either before or against the amendment.
Is there any public comment on this item, or against? Hearing done?
Check online.
No.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
So, moving on to the action items, Tiffany has six point one.
Excuse me one second. We're going to reconvene the Commissioners' Public Meeting this time. I'm sorry, I might have missed it.
That's all right.
Okay.
Take it off.
I'm presenting the amendments that we just reviewed to the Commissioners for adoption, with the change that I had mentioned in the presentation.
Question? Motion?
I'll move to adopt ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash oh-two, regarding the county zoning and subdivision, tax amendments.
Is that with the change?
The change is outlined, yeah, absolutely.
I have a second. That motion? All fair side. Aye, aye, so, Carrie. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Tiffany.
Six point two, we have Maya T. on the line, along with Doug Forster. Maya, are you?
Yes, I'm here. Yeah, good morning, Commissioner. I would like to do this particular item, which is to the Climate Services Agreement with Integrity Health. This is contingent upon final legal review and the services design, but to detail what this agreement is, it's to establish a mandatory health center for, like, Hennepin County employees, newcomers and retirees. This center is scheduled to open in January of two thousand and twenty-two, and will provide healthcare services such as primary care, urgent care, and preventative care. And to talk more about this project is Doug Forster from Integrity Health.
He's here with his mind, he's going to fill you in. Please, so, introduce yourself. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, thank you, I'm glad to be here again. I'm Doug Forster, CEO of Integrity Health. I'm pleased that the Commissioners have affirmed an important initiative for healthcare. It has happened, it's a coincidence of it being a positive return on investment in terms of lowering healthcare costs by reducing better health outcomes. We've discussed this, and I have been before you, before in public settings, so I trust that general information is available. We responded to an RFP, and I believe this is a culmination of that, that effort, but I'm here to say that we're eager to begin, and I want to make sure that I have an opportunity to answer any questions that you may have. It may be the case that my clinical, Chief Clinical Officer, Judy Lagani, is on the phone, although I can't be sure. In any case, I'm yours.
I am here, Doug.
Great, Judy, thank you. It's like a seance.
Several years ago, Commissioner Mayor Beato and I were searching for ways to reduce the cost of healthcare in, like, Hennepin County. We were seeing healthcare costs escalate from as low as nine percent to as high as twenty-seven percent per year, and it was unsustainable, and it still is very expensive, but we have moved our policy to self-fund it. And Commissioner Mayor Beato and I took a ride down to your facility in New Jersey. We were very impressed with what we saw, and we asked for, you know, some input from the community members there, as well as the agency that you set this funding up. Everything was positive, and four or five years later, it was still positive, and they have seen tremendous value in savings. So, the initial cost may be there for us to implement, but we see from other health centers, such as the one you will be putting here, is that everyone agrees they have saved money. The most important was that healthcare for our people, and how important it is to be able to catch a disease or illness prior to, you know, coming so far gone that it's very expensive to treat. So, it's been a long time, we went through a lot of RFPs and a lot of companies that were competitors, and you still shine a light on them.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just for the public to understand, we budget, what about thirteen million dollars? Just fourteen, thirteen to fourteen million a year, so that means in ten years, we're going to spend a hundred and forty million dollars on healthcare. And so, if we can save five or eight percent, you're talking about saving a lot of money. And as Commissioner Mesier said, because county employees stay a long time, because we have employees who are here twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, it's to our advantage, not only in terms of keeping the tax base down, but in terms of keeping them healthy, because we all know that if we go to the doctor and we deal with diabetes before it develops into something more critical, we increase life expectancy and we increase the quality of life of workers, as well as keeping the taxes down for the public. So, I'm really excited, I, maybe Commissioner Meski, you want to talk a little bit about the process of how we got the RFPs and the committee?
Yeah, we, it's so important to have an healthy employee, because they're servicing you in public, we want them to be healthy, for their families, and for our county, and so what we did, when I came in office, I talked there to Commissioners, and we decided to put the RFP out for our broker, and we wanted to put together a committee, because it wasn't just our many decisions, we wanted to have the committee of the unions, the different departments we got in the county, so we put together a committee of about ten or twelve professionals through the county, that way they could go back to the employees and explain to them how complicated healthcare truly is. And we met for almost a close three years, and we interviewed two brokers per month, and then we also put it out for the Wellness Center, and we had, we had ten RFPs in the broker, and five on the RFPs on the Wellness Center, and then we narrowed down our choices with the broker, and with the Wellness Center, we're looking forward to that year, and we feel this is a good partnership, across the street, on campus here. It's not to replace anybody's doctor, it's there for the employees and their families, the defendants, the retirees, to come there Monday through Friday, and hopefully to cut down on emergency visits, ERs, to cut down prescription costs, and other things that we're working on doing regarding physical therapy, things like along those lines, and it would be fantastic moving forward and having that partnership, so that we have healthy employees, and at the same time, we keep costing money.
I think it's also important to state that we are looking at large to possibly partner with other public entities, to see if we can save money, save lives as well.
And the point, really, I'm talking to the employees now, it's all confidential. I was reading the contracts, they're all governed by the same federal regulations on HIPAA and the other requirements under the, under the federal law that protects people's privacy, so it's, it's no different than going into a Med Express. The difference here is we're really going to focus on helping people stay healthy, so if you have an issue with diabetes, or if you have an issue with weight, there are going to be people who are going to be able to help you confidentially and privately on a regular basis, as opposed to just being prescribed also medication, to try to help people change lifestyles, which ultimately leads to better health.
Thank you, Doug, thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, can I have a motion on action item six point two?
I'll move to approve the Climate Services Agreement with Integrity Health.
Well, Commissioner, if I would be, but we're still working on very few details on the, so, like, the final legal review.
Subject to final legal review and agreement on those details.
Okay, I'll send it down, I'll leave.
All fair side. Aye. Aye, so, Carrie, thank you. Maya?
Yes.
If you want to take the next two together, we can vote on them together.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, that would kind of speed things a little bit.
Yep, I can do that. So, the next two items, the first one I have is to run on Emma, you said Act one ninety-eight funds with West Branch Drug and Alcohol, there's two parts to this. The first part is to, for the investment and treatment of a bad DUI and drug offender is the amount of forty thousand dollars, and then the second part is for the prevention, case management, and treatment of juvenile probation clients, the amount of ten thousand dollars. Both of these are two thousand and twenty-one regulated items by court, and just enough D I I Act one ninety-eight funds are particular in their use, and they are subject to the Education Degree Reduction Fund, which are costs imposed on an individual that's hit or branded, it's the ARD program, or is subject to violation of control factors. Fifty percent of those funds remain in accounting to be used for subject-to-be treatment and prevention programs, and then the remaining fifty percent goes to positive, into that tutor fund, and is reserved by a P C P in the form of grants.
Okay, are there any questions on either action item? Motion accept?
I'll move to accept.
A second. Fair side. Aye.
One quick comment here, the public, West Branch Drug and Alcohol is the single county authority which is designated to channel state and federal funds to our county residents. The Commissioners utilize that as what's called the single county authority.
Maya, this also has six point five and six point six.
Yep, six point five is to know the West Branch Agreement to prove that is like registration for the month of May, there were sixteen agreements approved, and all which were budgeted items.
Okay, comments on those, these contract deals, ten thousand dollars, for the month of May? Hearing that, have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
A second. All fair side. Aye, so, Carrie.
And then the last item I have before you is to run on an amendment to agreement with Woody Williams Foundation, in the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. This allocation will be from Act of Teen Legacy Funds, and going to go to just revising the new allocation based off of the information provided for campaign funds for that particular project.
Questions or comments? So, real quick comments, so the public should understand what this is about. This is a monument to honor those who have been killed in action, and it was brought to us by the Gold Star families, and the Gold Star families are families who have someone who's died in the armed forces in action, and this will be a monument at Memorial Park, and it's, it's a great way for us as citizens to say thank you, and to say thank you to the families, say thank you to the people who have, who have passed on in action, and also to teach, teach our young people.
And they'll be dedicating it to Third Sunday, September, so, I hope that, the news, it's open to public. It would be a wonderful ceremony, I'm sure, that day. Thank you. Motion accept the action item six point six?
I'll move to approve the monument.
A second. All fair side. Aye, so, Carrie.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Maya.
Six point seven, Jerry Kennedy, voting on agreement with E plus. Jerry, are you on the phone?
I am on the phone. Morning, Jerry. Morning, Commissioners, before you is a maintenance and support agreement on our core network switches covering the downtown and WiSO campuses, cost of twenty-two thousand, four hundred dollars and sixty-three cents, provides coverage through June of two thousand and twenty-two. This is a budgeted item.
Okay, any questions on this? Hearing done, have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
A second. All fair side. Aye, so, Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
Aye, thank you.
Six point eight, Director McKernan, voting on appointment of a new director for children in youth.
Commissioner, do you approve for the appointment of the new director of children in youth, Matthew Salvatore?
Is there anybody here from Jersey?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I might just say that we're very excited about having Mr. Salvatore take over the position that had been held by Mark Agley for, I think, close to ten, eleven years? Yeah, and running children in youth is, obviously, it's important, because we, we, one of our kids who are in trouble to be taken care of, and kids who may not be in trouble, but who are in tight spots due to what their parents did or their guardians. But the other thing is that from a practical point of view, it can cost us a lot of money if we don't run children in youth properly, because the way the payment system and reimbursement is set up from the federal government, the more severe level of detention that a child is in, the less the state and fed pays, and the more we pay. And, and for example, if, really, the lesson from the federal state government is create conditions where children thrive, and where we don't have to have them in juvenile detention facilities, or we help the families. I'm not, I'm not blaming us for what other people do. I'm not blaming us for what other people do. I'm saying that they want us to take responsibility in a way. So for example, if it's five hundred dollars a day to keep a child in a juvenile detention facility, the federal government, Commissioner Meskew, might not pay anything, right? They might not pay anything. Whereas if we're doing programs and doing things that are not that level of detention, whether it's money at the front end of the pipeline, they will reimburse us.
I'm going to add, we had some terrific candidates. Matt wrote to the thought because of his knowledge and his knowledge of the help of our people. If you were to see how Mark and the administrative staff of the Children in Youth spend countless hours in trying to not only help or argue, but in saving money putting them into categories that will give us the most return from the state and federal governments, they do an incredible job. Matter of fact, a number of their practices were duped or given in the state because of, when you take a look at our children in youth, we've had employees there forty-five years. There are some today, we may miss this.
We missed it.
Okay, but we celebrate longevity at Children in Youth today. And when you're handing out pins that are twenty-five, twenty, thirty, thirty-five, forty years of service, this is a calling to these people. This wasn't about paycheck. And so I just want to thank all of our employees over at the Children in Youth. And I wish Matt well in the future. I'm sure he'll do a fantastic job and keep him around the way it is.
I've worked with the Children in Youth employees over the years and they're fantastic. They're so dedicated to their mission, their cause. They often, they work on weekends because they're constantly thinking about the children. So, and like Commissioner Meskew said, their longevity is off the charts. And they all get paid well. They truly care about what they're doing. We want to thank them and wish Matt well. He's excited about taking over and wish Mark well in his retirement. They're very good at leveraging dollars, state dollars to help keep the local dollars. So I want to thank them all for being a great team together.
One last quick comment. First, I also want to thank Judge McCoy and Judge Tierra for helping in this whole process. And yes, and Keith Wagner, who acted as the director of Children in Youth, just took on the duties, no extra pay, just did what he had to do. He's the director of the Joyner and the Mental Health ID, but he took on that for us and we want to thank Mr. Wagner. I want to just, a quick word to the public. You know, so much of this is learning, right? Twenty, twenty-five years ago, Children in Youth was all about placement and about getting kids even out of their own family. And the federal and state policies have changed, partly as a result of a lot of research. And so they'll try to keep kids with families, extended families. So it's important for you all to be aware of that because sometimes you look to the Children in Youth website and webpage, you might see some negative comments about what has been done, but it's because we're complying with federal and state policy changes that have really developed as a result of research to understand that having a child in a family that's somehow a connection to them is better for the child's overall development than placing them outside in foster families and so forth. We also want to thank our foster families who step up to the plate and who take kids. You know, imagine there's a drug bust in the middle of the night and you've got three kids there. Those kids have to go somewhere. They don't understand what's going on. They're six, eight, ten years old, or parents who get into problems, you know, or caregivers. So we want to thank them all.
I have a motion to vote on the appointment.
I'll move to approve the appointment.
I'll second.
Fair side.
Aye.
Max and carry. Thank you.
Six point nine, six point ten, and six point eleven are Beth Baylor and Beth is on the line.
Beth, you can handle three of them together if you like.
Okay, the first one is an improvement guarantee with Wolf Township. This is an agreement that we have within just guaranteeing the funds of three hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars for the build of the Hughesville power site. It's another piece of the puzzle for the zoning with Wolf Township. The next one is the amendment to agreement with the city Williamsport. This is a, well, the first item is a budgeted item. It's budgeted for the power site. It's actually no cost to Wolf Township, the cost is with the power site. The second item is the agreement with the city Williamsport. They have items on our ball people power and it's just a, it's a re-up there agreement to keep their items on our ball people power. And the third item is the addendum of the agreement with the city Williamsport for police dispatch services. It started in nineteen seventy-nine when we started dispatching the city police. This is just re-upping that contract again along with some frequency swap to work with our new radio system when it starts. We are switching around some radio frequencies, which is also written into that agreement. No cost from the second two items.
Okay, and the first one's a budgeted item.
Yes, the first one is a budgeted item for the tower built in Hughesville.
Are you drinking a lot of coffee up there lately?
I am.
So that department is doing double shifts because it's very difficult to find people who want to work right now. And it is a process. It takes a year to become educated enough to handle the funds. Some people don't make it in that year. And it is very stressful to not go on the call. Can you imagine if we didn't have these people that were dedicated to work the double shifts and to work on the weekends and holidays? You call 911 and there's no answer? Very difficult. It's a very important department of the county. And we appreciate all the work that you do and your entire staff does that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And they can only train two at a time, Phil, which is hilarious. My ability with.
That's correct. Training two at a time pretty much passes out our staff. And we have two that just completed phone training, which is very exciting, and they're starting radio training in the next two weeks. So hopefully we get them moved along before we have a retirement coming. So basically, even if those two do get moved along, we're still down, you know, we're losing one. So it seems like we move ahead and fall behind. But hey, we're all fit and it's Director Hudson and I have both been working in the center to help out and try to get the people who are working some of the overtime and breaks. So if we sign up for this, we know what it entails, even though I think some of the people don't realize exactly until they're in it, how much this helps us. The beach can't ever be empty. So we all pitch in and we all do it. That's what we're doing. My staff is amazing. I can't say enough about them. We felt we had a call off. I can't, we had one over the weekend and I can't tell you when the last one was. And we had one person that was sick over the weekend. And, you know, everybody, it was a twelve-hour shift and three people pitched in and covered four hours each and it was covered. So, you know, I'm very proud of myself. They work very hard.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
Thanks.
I have a motion on action eight six point nine, six point ten, six point eleven. I'll move to approve.
I second.
Fair side.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have a good day.
You too.
And the last three items Jenny Pucciano has, and Jenny's also on the line.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Jenny.
Hi, I can do these items together if you want or separately?
Please, let's do them together.
Sure, these are three items with the city Williamsport for fair funding projects. And fair is the Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund, fund from the Pennsylvania Housing Agency. And those are funds that are derived from oil and gas drilling in Lycoma County that go to support affordable housing projects here in the county. The first contract is an amendment with the city Williamsport for the Florida M. R. S. N. Improvement Program, which is housing rehab for rental units in the broader neighborhood. And that's in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. And that's a two thousand and fifteen funded project and that's a one-year grant extension. The second program is also a one-year grant extension with the city Williamsport's Door Properties Rehabilitation Program with two thousand and sixteen fair funds. And they have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to help both rental and owner-occupied rehab across the city. And the third contract with the city Williamsport is for the Park Avenue Neighborhood Rental Rehab Program. And that's using two thousand and nineteen funds and that's also a one-year project extension. And they have two hundred thousand dollars for rental rehab in the Park Avenue Neighborhood.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I think it's important to note where a lot of our fair funds come from. And that's due to the gas industry, which is taking a beating right now. When you look down the list, these, a number of these people that they serve are underprivileged and in dire need of help just to support, to live in a place that's comfortable and safe. And when that act was written back in two thousand and twelve, passed in two thousand and twelve, they truly believed that with the material that they had to look at as far as taxing this industry was a reasonable request that there was going to be X amount of wells drilled, that they were going to eventually bring county taxpayers in about one hundred and ninety to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a well over the first fifteen years. And then the funding is done, okay? What technology showed them was there was a little miscalculation, was that they were figuring out a well being drilled every fifteen hundred feet. And that's the revenue that we would receive in comparison to other states. But now they're drilling two to three miles. So the revenues that they were expecting will never meet their expectations. It was a blessing to have the oil and gas industry in our backyard. And these are just another example of what this industry brought to Lycoma County. It's been a world of help. And as we noticed, we're giving out our legacy fund from that Act thirteen money to private park. So a tremendous kind of bid, and I think thank the legislators back then for coming up with this bill.
Motion accept on the action eight six point twelve.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Fair side.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good evening. Good day.
Thank you.
Commissioner's comment?
We're going to skip here and we're going to thank everyone for being here and thank everyone for having patience to stand by until we got through county business. So we're going to do something a little different here. We're going to go on to public comment first and then the commissioners will comment after that. So we just ask that everybody please be respectful, respectful as they come up to the podium. We want to hear everyone who wants to speak. And try to keep it to three minutes. If you go a little longer, I'm not going to say you got to stop. We just try to keep it within, I'm sure a lot of people here like this. We want to hear everybody, so we'd like to go through. Sir, okay, second. Yeah, go ahead, Ben. We'll have you next, ma'am. Okay, if you can stop it up. Yep. Right there, just.
Don't get afraid. I double spaced in March one because my eyes are little. My name is John Shableski. I live at one thirty-four Front Street, Linden, in the wonderful village of Linden. Been a resident of Lycoma County for twenty-five years. And I work in the publishing industry. I work with a lot of libraries around the country and actually around the world. So it's a pretty amazing network that we have. And I'm normally very comfortable speaking anywhere else on the planet except for right here at this moment, so bear with me. In fact, I think some of my radio days used to be as well. So this is about words and how much they matter to who we are as residents of this great country. In seventeen eighty-seven, the beginning of the preamble to the United States Constitution begins, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union." And I swear to you, I'm usually really good at this stuff. You may notice it doesn't delegate a specific race. It doesn't delegate a faith or a gender. This talks and speaks directly to who we are as people. This is also, as you will notice, I continue about this theme of words. I'm researching a story about the rise of Hitler and fascism in Europe a hundred years ago, almost to now. And it began with simple words and judgments on books and stories and people that were different. And this is also about who you gentlemen are as representatives of our county and the words you choose when you speak to your constituents about the books, about the displays, the pride display at J. H. C. Brown Library, which, if you've never been out of this county, I encourage you, go other places, see other libraries. You'll see how amazing our library is. Seriously, I'm much better at this. Recently, two of you visited the Brown Library and saw the display. You had concerns that you had conveyed from a couple of constituents about the types of words or types of books that were on the display. In fact, Mr. Meskew, you said it's not an attack on anybody in defense of your post. It's not attacking the library, not attacking the LTB community. They are wonderful people, truly business owners, parents, as you know, part of our society. There's no room for hatred, no room for violence. And I'm trying to make sure I was accurate on that. But yet on social media, from your private handle, you threatened to defund the libraries. Now here's what those words do. Those words enable and empower other people who feel they can have violence or disown or discredit or disqualify or make other people less than because they do not act the way you do. Because they're not straight, because they don't go to your church, you make them less. And because when you make them less, they are subject to violence. They are subject to hatred. So you have to choose your words very, very carefully. Again, it was a hundred years ago Hitler began his rise to power. Very simple phrases, very simple things, books being removed, people becoming less than human because they did not represent the ideals of what became the superior human race. The manufacturing, the institutional extermination of people because they were different, because they were Jewish, because they were gay, because they were retarded, because they were disabled, and I apologize for that word. But those were the way these people were looked at at the time. It's very simple. These are just books. You can't become gay because you picked up a book. If you disapprove of a book that's in that library, okay, you let the director know. You file a complaint and you move on. But the moment you start throwing out words of hatred, we're in a time where that enables and empowers people quickly to become destructive, to hurt, to harm. We can't do that. We need to study history. We need to understand what these words mean and how they impact who we are. Libraries are the most precious things we have, some of the most amazing things we have. There are countries around the world that don't know how, they don't have a word for library. We're an amazing place. We have a great library system. The best thing, gentlemen, that you can do is recognize those people who have those issues. But the rest of us, we have a great system here and that represents everybody, not just one person, not just two people, but people of all walks of life. So thank you for your time. I appreciate this. Remember, it begins with words you have to choose carefully.
Thank you.
S H A, B L E.
E L E.
B L E, S K I. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be here.
Absolutely.
And I understand your.
Oh, excuse me, ma'am, can you say your name?
Mary, oh, I'm sorry, Mary Shaminsky, S-I-E-M-I-N-S-K-I, it's Fairfield County.
Can you send us a letter, or email?
Yes. Yes, I did send.
Thank you for sending it.
I sent you an email, yes. I understand your concern for the mental health of the young people of Lycoming County, but removing books that you object to from the lot, display, the children's room of the James V. Brown Library is not a way to help those young people. I speak as a librarian, I'm the retired director of the Penn College Library, and I have 50 years of experience in public and academic libraries, and I'm a concerned citizen. As a matter of fact, my first job was as a page at the Brown Library when I was a senior at Williamsport High School 62 years ago. So now you know how old I am, and I'm passionate about this. I want to tell you that libraries are deeply committed to the basic principle that all libraries are forms for information, and that the basic policies guide their services, and this is what's called the Library Bill of Rights. One of those principles, Article Two of the Bill of Rights, is that, and I quote, "Libraries should provide material and information presenting all points of view on current and historical issues. Materials should not be prescribed or removed because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval." And I might add, in the case of your concerns, Mr. Metzger, Mr. Musare, your own personal beliefs. I speak passionately also about Article Three, "Libraries should challenge censorship in the fulfillment of their responsibility to provide information and enlightenment." So your request for the James V. Brown Library to basically hide books for young people on sexual and gender issues defies the basic principles of good community library service, and as you have said, and the excellent library service that our library has been providing since 1906. And furthermore, I say, reading a book about being gay or transgender will not make a person gay or transgender. And I have a quote from a wise 11-year-old that I know, he put it this way, it doesn't work that way. Reading a book about cats do not make you a cat, but reading a book about being gay will not make you a cat. As an advisor to the LGBT group at Penn College maybe 20 years ago when I was there, I can assure you that these young college students at that time, who were frightened, who were, who were questioning their identity and needed some help, and the gray-haired librarian, and gay people too, were there to support them during a period that wasn't as open as it is today, but they didn't turn gay by reading a book. As a matter of fact, sometimes finding their own experience reflected in a book that might have saved their sanity, and you expressed a concern about suicide, and some of these, these young people are getting college, 18-year-olds in rural Pennsylvania, really needed that help, they needed to see themselves someplace else, and perhaps want to save their life. And I'm gonna change here a little and echo some of the other things that the former speaker said. I want to switch gears and speak to you about the dangers and actually the evils of banning books. The Nazi Final Solution didn't begin with extermination camps, it rather began by demonizing undesirable minorities, Jews, homosexuals, mentally ill, intellectually disabled, Roma, Jehovah's Witnesses, political dissidents. Book burnings were part of the pre-war scheme, and sadly rallied large swaths of ordinary Germans, some of them very good people, to believe in and then enable them to act in hateful and genocidal ways. We won't let that happen in Lycoming County, we love Lycoming County, I love Lycoming County, and we will, we will want to preserve those basic rights and have respect for all people in our county. Thank you for your time.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Morning. Hi, Commissioner. My name is Amanda Waldman, and I spell it W-A-L-D, M-A-N. I'd like to comment on the statements that were made at the end of the last meeting. There are a number of things that I expect to hear discussed that are counted by our commissioners, things like, what is the county's response should Senate Bill One be passed? And the property taxes of every single person in Lycoming County and this state dramatically increase. There are, another issue is, certain townships were not and are still not in compliance with MS Four requirements. So not only is it harming waterways, it's harming properties, it's damaging people's homes. There's a lack of affordable, accessible housing for disabled residents. There is a rapid decline in Lycoming County of our population. What are some solutions, how can we stop this, or slow it down? Why do we keep losing all of our young people? What I didn't expect, having been here with the Diversibility Committee, I never expected to hear the inflammatory language that was used to discuss the Pride Month display in the library. Words like indoctrinate and promote are chosen intentionally to provoke fear, fear of people who are different, fear by a select few of people that they don't understand, they're afraid we'll lose our way of life, or our lives, or our children, or our wives, or our husbands. I wish I could say I was shocked. Unfortunately, throughout history, these words have been used to incite fear of groups of people that were viewed as different, Germans, Irish, Italians, people of color, women when we wanted just to vote, and now the LGBTQ community. Both of you repeatedly stated that you were not discriminating against the library, you weren't discriminating against the LGBTQ community, but that's exactly what your statements reflected here in this meeting, at the library, and then in the awful posts on social media. This is what discrimination looks like, and it's what brought all of us here today. You have the opportunity to open up a dialogue, to encourage tolerance, inclusiveness, and diversity, but you chose to act rashly, based on your personal feelings and beliefs, as both of you said a number of times in your statements last week. And I, I'm not trying to change your mind, personal beliefs are personal beliefs. I spent a large portion of the past year reaching out to people who don't see the world like I do, and I know that, I recognize faces in this crowd right now. I don't have to agree with you, I wanna better understand. Why would I do that? Why would I risk someone calling me names or hating me just because I wanna have a conversation? It's because that's what public servants do. We have open, honest, and respectful conversations. We listen to each other and we try and find common ground and solutions. It's a phenomenon known as civil discourse, and it can still happen. I've been doing it for over a year. Unfortunately, the path you chose was divisive and polarizing, but I don't think you did that on purpose. I don't believe that you intended for that to be the consequence that it was. I am here to ask you, engage in civil discourse with all of us, every one of us, all of us should be talking, not hating. It's your turn to listen to us, we listened to what you had to say last week. We are all in this room a lot better than the divisive rhetoric we've, we've engaged in, and I'm guilty of it too, I'm not gonna say I'm not, I have at times been. But let's work together, civil discourse, let's make our community a tolerant and inclusive one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dan Manehal, that's M-A-N-E-V-A-L, from Williamsport, born and raised.
Good morning, Dan, thank you for being here.
You're welcome. I'm gonna divert from my original speech to talk to you first about something that's just happening right now. I just got this information yesterday. David Moore, who's the president of Pennsylvania Equality Project, he lives in northwestern Pennsylvania, is in Harrisburg this morning, or he would have been here. He is in Harrisburg talking to Governor Wold as we speak, and he is trying to get the Pennsylvania Fairness Act reinstated, and so that it will be debated in the Congress of Pennsylvania. Otherwise, he would have been, he's talking about us as we talk about this. This is embarrassing to Lycoming County, it's not going to be a positive reflection on us, what David is doing in Harrisburg this morning is not positive. Talking about what is going on here with the Lycoming County Commissioners and their attitudes, and what they've said last week, so I just wanted to announce that, about what's going on right now in Harrisburg, they're talking about Williamsport, and it's not good. I do want to thank the James V. Brown Library in Williamsport for doing the Pride Display, it's tremendous, I was in and see it twice. Actually, I guess I should also thank the commissioners for not wanting to shut down the adult display that's upstairs. That display upstairs, I'm thrilled and excited to be in it, I'm in the book out in central Pennsylvania, which is written by Bill Burton and Barry Loveland. The book contains stories and LGBTQ history of central Pennsylvania. Three people from Lycoming County are interviewed in that book, I'm one of the three. This was done over the course of years, I was interviewed twice, and it took years and years to compile. Two of the three that were interviewed have left Lycoming County. I think Amanda was referring to this as well. This is not an area that is certainly best for gay people to live in. Our best LGBTQ people leave the area, and that's a shame, but they know there are greener pastures out there for them. But I digress, I wanna talk about my personal history a little bit, and I'll be as brief as I can be. When I was a poor, small boy in Williamsport, Pennsylvania, my mother on a Saturday would take me to the James V. Brown Library, and there I would find a very small section designed for children's literature. I would pick up a book from Dr. Seuss. I can't tell you how many times I read Green Eggs and Ham, or Horton's Beers of Who, you know. These were not the only selections available to me at that time, but I would like to read to you a very short passage from one of those books, which is incredibly apropos. "I am lucky to be what I am. Thank goodness I'm not just a ham, or a clam, or a dusty jar of sour gooseberry jam. I am what I am." And that's a great thing to be, that's from Dr. Seuss. Let me repeat that line again, "I am what I am." It's amazingly good to be a gay international anthem, that's what that is, that's a line from a gay national, international anthem, and it's also from the Broadway Shalhalla Fall, and the very funny play, a very funny play and movie, the, the.
Mary Cage.
The Mary Cage, right, right, thank you. I know that this might shock you, but even as a child, I knew I was different, I knew I was different. I couldn't define it, I couldn't explain it, I couldn't even talk about it, but I knew I was different. When I went to my aunt's house for a visit, she had a lot of children, like cousins, a lot, and there was a boys' room, the boys were watching football, there was a girls' room, they were playing with dolls, yes, which room I went in. I went into the room with the girls and the dolls, because I knew I was different, and I couldn't put my finger on it. I wish I was different, but I, I just, I had my own inner feelings. I struggled a lot growing up, I couldn't even come out to myself until I was almost 25 years of age. That, that was a lot of time wasted. Now to the present, a young child nowadays definitely has a lot more exposure to the words gay, lesbian, transgender than anyone ever before. You can't watch a TV program for hours and hours without encountering it as a gay character, maybe. You can't browse a newspaper without seeing a story about an LGBTQ person. They might even, a young child might have even known the name Pete Buttigieg, for instance, you know. So for a young child nowadays to walk into that large children's wing and to find a small display table with a few gay-related books on it is monumental, monumental, as far as I'm concerned. If that child were, were to pick up those books and look at the beautiful illustrations and, and read, they're very, very easy reading, of course, because it's geared to a young child, that, that would be life-changing, I would think, in some cases. A child now upon browsing these books might say, hey, that's me, hey, those are my feelings, that, that's what I think I am. And believe it or not, a young child can do this, if I can do it at that age, so can a young child nowadays, because it's a little bit, little bit easier nowadays. But if that display helped one child this month, it will have served its purpose, just one, just one. So self-discovery is everything, it really is. Later on, they'll have to deal with issues beyond the imagination, that they're gonna face discrimination and harassment, but these books might just save a life. I think Amanda mentioned, the suicide rate among gay teens is really high, and it's really shocking. And I'll, I'll say it again, just one, just one. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Allison Rupert, one L, one V. I'm from Penn Township, and I just have a short and sweet thing, not nearly as eloquent as the people that came before me, but this is from my heart. I believe every person in this room wants their children and grandchildren, and everyone else's children, to thrive, I do believe that. We want every child to grow up knowing that they're a valued member of our community, no matter what skin color, ethnic background, physical appeal, artistic gifts, athletic ability, intelligence quota, or gender traits they were born with. The library's Pride Month display conveys that very important message to our kids. To call for the, the display's removal is to send our kids the opposite message. In years past, you'd see mostly people of color fighting racial discrimination, women fighting gender discrimination, mostly disabled people fighting discrimination against them, et cetera. But today, we see many, multiple groups coalescing in solidarity to fight prejudice and discrimination against any group. I hope you agree with us that no child should ever be made to feel that they're unacceptable. I hope you'll join us in supporting our library's message that Lycoming County is a welcoming, inclusive place for kids and for adults to settle in, for kids to grow up in and for adults to settle in. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is McKenna Long, L-O-N-G, and I'm really nervous, but I'm trying to hear this here. When I wrote this, I'm not gonna lie, I was pretty angry, and what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna read most of it, but I'm gonna take down the tone, because there's some people in here already angry enough, I can see twitching with anger, and we're not gonna go that direction. So, again, I said my name's McKenna Long, I'm a resident of Lycoming County, down in Hughesville, I'm a mother of two extremely smart people, biracial children, I'm also proud mother of a daughter who's a member of the LGBTQ community, and just to set the background, I'm one of those Monty Valley Hospital, 173, I'm from here, my family was extremely involved, members of the community. Due to a career switch, my mother moved us down to Washington, DC, and then for the rest of my years, pretty much grew up in Atlantic City, New Jersey. The reason I'm saying this, because after living here, I was blessed to really discover that there's a whole other world out there, there's so many beautiful people, so many different people faces, I'm sorry, I can't get you those words. There's so many religions and ideas and identities, and though I lived elsewhere, I'd always come back here to see my family in Hughesville. It always brought me peace and comfort and a lot of happiness here, I love here, so beautiful here. And it was the same. And it was the same attributes that brought me back when I was a victim of a crime and I was injured pretty badly and I needed that same comfort and love and happiness that I used to have here. But what I feel here now is anything but that. I don't feel safe anymore. And it's because of my children, I don't feel my children are safe. I've had to tell my daughter that it'd probably be best not to advertise that you're bisexual. You're already black, don't overload them. I've had to have talks with my black son about how he should walk home and how he should carry himself so as not to get harassed or worse. I had a security system set up around my house after the George Floyd incident. You know, my neighbors put up a Confederate flag facing our house for my children. It's so hard. It's behaviors and comments like that that justify and give these people the energies to spread that hate and intolerance and just be bullies. It all, it's all it is. There's an enormous LGBTQ community around here. They just keep it under wraps out of fear. And some island, they'll probably voted for you. And I know you noticed the comments and the leverage of how many people were in support of the library's display as opposed to the ones that were against. And I'm sure a lot of the ones that were against privately messaged you and didn't put it under the comments. Those books were not about sex. And they were sexualized. They're about being comfortable with oneself and feeling that who you are isn't wrong and you're not alone, period. And it's Pride Month and a lot of places have these displays. And I'm sure you spend money in them and I'm sure they were all not contacted and told how much money you put into them and encouraged to remove their display. Although there was one correct statement in that post, let kids be kids, yes. Let kids be happy and play and be comfortable and secure and not be threatened or bullied or insecure or confused or God forbid even think about taking their life, which is what these books help prevent. So let kids be kids by having access to these books and let them be on display during Pride Month so children and parents that might have been afraid to ask in an area like this can see there are books out there. And they can check the book out, take it home with no judgment, and then that kid can be a happier kid. And as far as the comments of your supporters crying, they don't need to walk in the library and have this shoved down their throats. Why can't even step out of my house without having my neighbors' political and racial ideas and signs shoved down my throat? I can't even go home. Because the ordinance aren't enforced. If they feel like you, they're left alone. And I'd actually love to see a lot of the people that are here angry, I'd love to see their library cards and how many times they've gone. Enough. The horrifying bigotry that is rampant through Lycoming County is not only disgusting, but it's dangerous. Especially when it's coming straight from our elected officials. Community is a noun. It's a unified body of individuals living in a particular area broadly. We are all Lycoming County. And you are here to serve all of us, not just who cherry pick. This little bubble, it's almost like a good old boys' club here in Lycoming, it's going the way of the dinosaurs. Ways of thinking are much different. And as the comment showed, you're getting outnumbered. It's been spreading negatively on the internet. I have friends from different states sending me this. And it's for reasons like this that I'm running for council in my town. Because we've been harassed by the powers that be in my town just for being who we are. We should want everybody to be happy here and love living and visiting here because Lycoming County is one of the most beautiful places on earth. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Mary Wright, W-R-I-T-H-T, and I live in the city of Williamsport. Today I'm here as an ally, but more importantly, as a mother of an LGBTQ child. She was not quite 11 when she came out to me. It is an honor when a friend comes out to you because it means that they trust you implicitly and that you have created a safe space where they can be themselves. But as a parent, when my child came out to me, it was an emotional roller coaster because I knew at that moment that every picture joy she'd ever have would be shadowed by intolerance of others. When I read her Sleeping Beauty and we talked about the wedding to Prince Charming, I didn't think about, will my daughter be refused a wedding? Will she be able to go to the country of her choice on a honeymoon? But at least I'm lucky that we will deal with that together because I have a friend who has to sit in a empty swab at her table for Thanksgiving because her son was not safe coming out to her. And instead of celebrating with a happy day's sun, she got to bury him with her idea of having a straight one. I wish these books had been on display for me and for her when we were young so that we could have had a better understanding and a lot less fear. I'm thrilled that they exist and are readily found on display at the James V Brown because books like People's Identities and Their Love Relationships should never have to be hidden. If one child gets to feel normal or has more compassion to others, this display stands. Thank you.
Ray, R-A-Y-E, Beery, B-I-E-R-L-Y, High Township. Many of us are here today to talk about books. A few particular books in this case and the role they play in the lives of our children. I would like to talk about a book as well, but a different book. A few years ago, a rather well-known woman wrote a book inspired by the African proverb, "It takes a village to raise a child." This idea that it takes a village reflects the premise that children are a product not just of their home, but of the world. The village, if you will, in which they live. That it takes not just the family they live with, but the broader family of the village as a whole to provide the life experiences necessary to grow that child to be well-rounded, whole, and healthy. A child well-prepared to take on all of life's challenges and to live a fulfilling life. But just not a small part of the village, not just some of the village, but it takes all of the village to raise that child. No single one or two of us gets to choose who is more valuable and as such should have a greater role to play in the village in the raising of its children. Instead, we should recognize the value and importance of each and every one of us. I believe this. That we all have an important role to play in providing experiences that are not limited to those of just a few in the village, but all. Understanding that inclusivity begets empathy and vanishes bigotry. Our public library is part of our village and plays an important role in bringing the world to every child to allow our children to experience what is often out of reach in their everyday lives. A library nurtures children in age-appropriate ways and allows them to see the full spectrum of human existence. And I trust them to always have the best interest of the children at heart. The Commissioners play an important role in our village as well. But I do not believe it should be one that attempts to limit who in the village is deemed important and necessary. Who in the village has a role to play in raising the children based on... Based on what exactly? Educating children about the breadth of human experience isn't wrong, is it? Allowing everyone in the village to make positive contributions to the lives of our children is a good thing. Isn't it? Recognizing that diversity is what allows us to thrive as a people is important. Isn't it? I guess we'll find out, won't we?
I mean, I could wake up like this, but...
Okay ma'am, did you say your name, please?
Margaret Handerman, B-A-S-S. Commissioners. I read each of the three books mentioned in Mr. Metzger's Facebook post from cover to cover. But from your comments, Mr. Metzger, I'm not sure you can say you did. One book does talk about a boy's parents' reaction to his desire to wear a dress to school. But at the end of the book, his mother helps him sew one, and he does wear it to school. One book is about two siblings and how one learns to accept the other's decision to identify as a boy.
Speak to the mic, please, because people are not, they can't hear you.
Really? Okay. We're gonna have to start over.
Well, I'm sorry, it's also being live stream, yeah.
Okay.
And so they won't be picked on, you can pick up where you left off.
Alright. One book is about two siblings and how one learns to accept the other's decision to identify as a boy. The third book is about a boy who wants to be a mermaid. I am not sure if I'm more upset with Mr. Metzger or Mr. Misery's desire to hide these books in a message from other view or the thought that they question the library's right to display books for Pride Month and the children's room. According to a recent survey conducted by the organization Just Like Us, young LGBTQ plus people are three times more likely to self-harm and twice as likely to contemplate suicide as non-LGBTQ plus peers. This study surveyed 2,934 pupils aged 11 to 18 including 1,140 pupils who identified as LGBTQ plus between December 2020 and January 2021. Dominic Arno, chief executive of Just Like Us stated, "LGBTQ plus young people need to hear from their families and schools that there's nothing wrong with who they are and that they can have a bright future ahead of them." This speaks to the reason why these books should be on display in our library. These students here do not wake up one morning as a youth and identify as a member of the LGBTQ plus community. Most of them will relate stories of themselves as young children and the struggles they experienced. As a retired teacher and former church youth leader, I am glad to see these books are available to open discussion for all children. I support the library's right and choice to display these valuable books.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Elizabeth Downey, D-O-W-N-E-Y. I have prepared remarks. You know, most people here have already commented on so many of the things that I had. So I'm just gonna speak from the heart, things I was thinking on the way in this morning. When I first read your post, I was, it just, it really hit me personally and took a front to it. I felt it was repugnant. It was very shocking to me because of my own beliefs and my own feelings. So, I'm going to speak about my faith. As a kid, I was raised to believe that we love one another. That's out of the New Testament. I know you can go back into the Old Testament, find all kinds of other things against certain of us here. But I'm speaking from the New Testament. One of the things Jesus kept saying over and over again was to love one another. And that's what I kept thinking on the way in this morning. We need to do that. There's so much discourse now in our society. I could make these comments and somebody disagrees because of my belief in all of us here and walk out that door and in today's society, I could be shocked. That's just how volatile this society is. It concerns me deeply. I want to think that you never had intentions of complaining all of us as you did. When we go into the voting booth and vote for you, we're not voting for your personal feelings. We're voting... We're voting for you because we want to think and we want to know, we do, we think in our hearts, we do know that you're going to do the job to which you were elected with an open mind, no matter your personal feelings. You're not gonna bring those into the office where you're working. So I want to think that's how you, that you made a mistake. I want to hope that in the future, you won't make inflammatory remarks like that. Maybe you'll stop and think a couple seconds. I know I need to do that. Before I make comments, I have to stop and think. Wait there, is this right? You know, you just automatically do that, or I do, through my head is, stop and think. Wait, what are you going to say here? Think about it a second. So I take it, I take a deep breath and then do it. I would ask you, you take a deep breath before you make comments like that. As you can see, they were very inflammatory to a lot of us. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and I would ask you to love one another, no matter your personal convictions. Thank you.
Good morning. Hi, Jennifer Lang, L-A-N-G-E. I did not come here expecting to say anything and then I didn't realize I didn't have a chance. It sounds scattered, it absolutely is. I'm nervous. I work in mental health. And I, I'm gonna echo what some people said and add to it a little bit. Kids are not too young... Kids are not too young to know who they are. I never chose to be a woman, I just knew it. And I imagine that that's the same for some of... Some people who have to tell people what their gender is because it's not reflected externally when they're a kid. My first crush was a girl when I was six. I had no idea what that name was. I can tell you that when I got older, it felt so good to have a word that described me. Kids are not too young to know who they are. They're also not too young to kill themselves. They're not too young to engage in self-harm. They're not too young to be bullied. They're not too young to be victims of some of the most horrific abuse I've ever heard by adults that they should be trusting, by family members. All based on how they identify and what they choose to engage in. We, as a society, socialize people's genders and sexualities from the moment they're born. You know, and having these books out there, you know, it makes me think... I grew up in a blended family and my parents got books on how to raise their kids on a blended family because these books are not just about the LGBTQ plus community. It's about straight people recognizing that we're people. You know, because parents need something that gives them the ability to talk to their kids as much as kids need to have that representation because if they don't have words, they end up doing some pretty awful things to themselves. On my mind, what, like... But really, oh. On my mind, what, like, but really, oh, straight kids grow up too. And having these books there for them helps them to realize that, you know, we are all part of the same community. They shouldn't just hear one side, and a lot of times, that's how it is. They grow up to be teachers, and they grow up to be doctors, and work in healthcare. And one of, like, people in this community deserve good, competent healthcare. They deserve to be treated as equals by teachers. And they deserve to know that they, they are accepted. And when we make comments like, hey, these books about people like you aren't accepted here, we're telling them they're not accepted in the community. And we throw them out of the library, which should be a safe place for all people of all backgrounds and identities, and especially for kids. Like, I cannot tell you how many times I went to the library when I was a kid, and I ended up volunteering there to get out of the atmosphere at home. This makes it safe for them. Comments like you made makes it dangerous for them. It makes it dangerous for them as they grow up. And all I wanted to say was, they're, they're not too young to never be young. You know, and we don't have to socialize that.
My name is Bob Wallace, W-A-L-L-A-C-E. I am a retired pastor, also a proud, I was a proud father. I have a gay son who died tragically a few months ago, and we're still dealing with that. But one of the things we continue to deal with is the discrimination he had to grow up with in Lycoming County. He, shortly after he graduated from high school, left this area and never came back. And he left this area largely because of comments like yours. It hurts people. You prayed in your prayers that we all might be united, that we might respect one another. How can you pray that prayer and make the statements you have made against this community? We need to really examine how we're living. We lived the last few years under some terrible, terrible statements and lies and discrimination and disunity, and we need to move to love and concern, compassion, and understanding. This is a great place to live, but we can make it far greater by being open and accepting to others, by loving one another, as has been said to us before. We do not need to stand up against books that are good. I don't know if you read them, but I, you encouraged me to go read them. I read every one of them. And they're great books. They're fantastic books. If you haven't read them, go read them. And in one of those books, no, I lost my paper. Here it is. In one of those books entitled, Phoenix Goes to School, a transgender child says, "My mommy tells me I'm perfect and to brave, to be brave. You know who you are. Just be yourself and listen to your wife." That's a valuable, valuable lesson for any child, to understand that they should be who they are. That's what we should be celebrating, not tearing down people and not making them feel unsafe in a place like our library. They should feel safe in that library. And that has been pointed out, and your statements, most certainly, were just the opposite of what this county needs. We have a great county here. Let's make it better. Let's live out that prayer. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Faye Moore, F-A-Y-E-M-O-O-R-E. I just want to say I'm sorry for your loss, and I hope that we can all remember him the way that you would like to have him remembered. I'm 15 years old. I attend Bulling'sport High School. And the things I'm about to say, I am not saying to threaten anybody in this room. I am saying it to make you uncomfortable. When I was 11 years old, I tried to take my own life. And I want you all to think about if your children were in their rooms alone, thinking those thoughts, feeling small, and feeling taken advantage of, because that is how I felt. And that is how I feel when I see people who are bigger than me or in a position of power say things like the things you said. I know that there are children in their rooms right now who saw the things that you said, and they felt small, and they felt used, and they felt lesser. I apologize for getting emotional. I am just very angry. I am not up here to try to make anyone more angry or to make anyone scared. I just need you to think about the things that you say before you say them. I'm 15. I should be at home on my phone doing stupid teenager stuff and not up here telling you what a response is. As a parting word, I would just like to say that this is a great thing that we have everyone out here supporting people who in this county are usually overlooked or swept under the rug. I'm very nervous. Sorry. It's really great to see everyone, and everyone was really, really supportive. Outside, there's dancing happening, and there's little kids in rainbow tutus. And if those kids grow up and if they decide, maybe I'm not a girl, maybe I'm not a boy, maybe I'm not straight, that is none of your concern. Deserve to understand what's happening. Because when I was, the first time I told my parents that I liked girls, I was in third grade. I was in third grade, and I came to my mom, and I said, "Mom, I really like this girl, and I'm confused what's happening." And my mom, who's also a part of the LGBTQ+ community, explained to me, "Honey, there's nothing wrong with what you feel. It's normal. You are normal, and you're going to be okay." And if that is not response that you have to the children who you have power over as your physician, then you should not be in your position. I know there's been a lot of people up here today, and I know that a lot of people have said some of the things I've said. But I hope that you can look at me and see that I look like your children. I am the same age as your children. And if you cannot look at me and tell me that I do not deserve the same love as your children does, then you should not be a parent. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Kenna Peters, and I live in the city of Bulling'sport. Kenna, K-E-N-N-A. And I live in the city of Bulling'sport, and I grew up here. Almost every day when I was growing up, I was at the James Peteron Library. I was picking out different books and reading all night and staying up way past my bedtime just to get that information in my head. And growing up, I would have loved to see books like that on the screen more often. And I would have loved to read books like that just so that I could understand. So that when I got to a certain age, I could understand how it feels as a person. And to see something like that posted on social media for all generations to see, all people to see, it hurts. And growing up here, I loved it, and I felt a sense of community going to that library and seeing all those displays and seeing all of my friends there and having playdates there. But it was always the safest space for me, and it was always a place I could go when I didn't know where to go. And anyone should feel comfortable going there. Anyone should feel comfortable taking out any book they would like or reading anything they would like without feeling like they are being attacked. Everyone in the community should feel equal. No one should feel like they're discriminated against. No one should feel like they're being targeted. Yet with what you posted, people do feel like they're being targeted. People should feel like they are a part of the community, not being separated.
Hello. My name is Brad Young. I'm from London. And I've heard a lot of good speakers up here today. But I think your community could hear a little bit from our side of the fence. I'm old enough to remember when gay people were viewed as freaks and, you know, misfits of nature, when they were drug out and beaten at bars, guys would lure them at rest stops and beat the hell out of them. It was wrong. And at that time, people begged for understanding and to be accepted by, you know, the community. I think they've been accepted by the community for a long time. I think our children and our guidance counselors should be trained to deal with these kids that are having trouble with their identity and what's going on. On the other hand, I think it's very sad, I discussed it before this meeting, that I think I was 14 before I knew what a gay kid was. I had a gay friend that was always trying to put the moves on me when I was 13, and I couldn't figure out what, or what he was. And I, most of my friends were the same way. We had no idea. But now, today's world, we're expected that when Jack and Jill went up the hill, when I was a kid, they got a pail of water. Now they're taught to go up the hill and masturbate each other in first grade, kindergarten.
Where's that at? What have you read?
Pay attention to the news. Pay attention to what the Board of Education is teaching.
Newsmax doesn't count.
I'm speaking, okay? I do not interrupt you. I don't expect you to be interrupted.
Please let him speak. Show each other respect.
So, yes, I have hired gay people. I have had some great gay workers. I don't have a problem with what you do in the bedroom. I don't have a problem with what you do in your gay breaks. But I have a problem when it's forced upon me constantly because you become an army of angry people that, you know, want to get your view to everybody.
You don't sound angry at all.
Please let him speak.
I'm angry that this is being pushed on our children constantly, that we're being, you know, asked to accept the fact that if I cut off my arm, I'm still a man. I cut off my leg, I'm still a man. But if I cut off my penis, I'm a woman. We're expected to, you know, acknowledge this. We're expected to allow biological males in the locker room with their daughters. We're expected to allow biological males to compete or daughters. See, I walk out. Don't listen to the other side.
I saw my son left here.
Well, good for him.
Because of guys like you who beat the hell out of us.
We didn't, I never beat the hell out of a gay guy in my life, and I don't treat gays with disrespect.
Please, excuse me.
But that was, that is not what we're being taught.
Brad, we're sorry for the loss of your son. Please let him speak. When everybody had the opportunity to speak, without interruption, please.
You know, I don't have a problem with gay people living their lives, doing what they want to do. But when it's constantly being forced down our throats and forced down our children's throats, yes, we become a little upset about it. So I'm simply asking, I think, you know, that my five-year-old grandson, if I have one, is gonna have to sit and listen to the gays. What was the, I forget what they call them, the gay transsexuals, hit someone, swish, swish, swish on public television last week? I mean, come on, but five-year-old, three, that was geared to three to seven-year-olds. That's a little young. I think it's sad, young lady. That third grade, you knew what sex was. Believe me, in my day, we didn't have a clue.
I didn't care.
And don't hold it three minutes to me because you all took six, seven minutes. That's all I have to say. But listen to our side, too.
I didn't catch your name at the beginning. Did you get your name?
I gave my name.
I didn't catch it. Could you repeat it?
No.
Okay. I'll watch the transcript. Thank you.
Be my guest.
You have a great day.
Sorry. I know you guys are going. After a break, we'll keep it going. Hi, my name is Jeff Breon, B-R-E-O-N, Bravo Romeo Echo Oscar November. I will be as brief as possible. Brevity is a father of wit. I am not very smart. However, there are a whole lot of people here in this island that are following the views laid out by some really tiny, ignorant, lazy people. And that is what it boils down to. I want each and every one of you, like coming county patriots, to please come up here. I do not believe in cancel culture. I believe it is a problem to have cancel culture. I want you up here. We're willing to cut you some slack. We want you to have information. I know I toss out somewhat inflammatory words, anecdotal mention of ignorance and laziness. But you are in the place, gentlemen, where you could have gotten the answer to your questions. You asked, "When's this going to end?" When a man wanted to put as his preferred pronouns, he and him, you said, "When's it going to end?" When the ignorance stops, Commissioner Masari. I don't know what. To talk with, hopefully in an amicable fashion, people of differing views. My name's Jeff. I know that there are a lot of people here who wouldn't bother giving a lot of the other people here the time of day just by the way they dress, by what they think, by what they've been poisoned to believe is going to happen to their children. Most of the time, when people are using children or the flag or religion to incite you, they are doing so because they don't have a leg to stand on. The ignorance that has come out of here should probably pause. I, I went sleepless last Tuesday night. Didn't sleep the GD week because of how many times I watched that, because of how it affected me. Thank you for some great words, by the way, Commissioner Secretary Nervio. However, it can't stop there. We can't just have some people come in. What we have to have is a dialogue, a discourse. I've spoken to some of these people at polling places, and they don't have arguments. They don't have sense to back up their statements. You're hearing a great deal of your fear and ignorance from your Newsmax, from your Fox News. It is not valid. Please, go to the library. I will, my email is jeff.breon@gmail.com. Shoot me an email. I will meet with you for coffee. I make a really good cup of coffee. My in-house is right over there. I really love, I make a good cup of coffee. We need to have that dialogue, though. Every single one of us is special snowflakes. I know that that's been used for a while now as some type of a hurtful term. I look, I grew up on Fred Rogers. I take great pride in being a special snowflake. I have loved, and I love others, and I welcome you to find that in one another. I can't, I can talk, I ramble. I want to talk and keep this going, but please. I have initially set out to present the two of you with not so much an ultimatum, but a choice, either a very public and formal and written apology to any people or persons who you have wronged, to ask you to step down in silence or to not run again. I found out you're likely not running again. Is that correct, Commissioner Masari? So Scott Metzger, I'll ask you, please, if, if I could yield any of my time, if anyone else is willing to yield their time, will we have to wait till next Tuesday to hear any type of catharsis? Will we have to wait until more people are hurt to have the Lycoming County Patriots actually use their names to not be afraid? Because they're, none of you, none of you, were dragged behind a truck until you were dead, until you were a bloody mess. None of you. And how many parents have had to bury their children because of that? Sorry, I'm angry. Thanks. Have a good day.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone out there in the gallery. My name is Karen Coke. I'm a resident of Lewis Township. I reside in Trout Run, Pennsylvania. Would like to address two concerns. My first concern is I'm very disappointed to see that coming to this first, this is the first Commissioners' meeting I've been to in public since the pandemic. And I'm very disappointed to see that you no longer offer the captioning of what's going on in the meeting during the pandemic. You folks had the words up there scrolling along. You look a little bit confused there, Scott. I don't see anything in the building right now that, yes, if someone is here, that they can't. Okay, well, like I said, I'm just a little disappointed to see that. I mean, I'm glad, I'm very thankful that you put it out there and made it available during the pandemic. But again, people with disabilities, those who may be hard of hearing, those who may be deaf, might still enjoy coming to a public meeting. My, my second concern- My, my second concern is, um, I think everybody's kind of picked up on what the cream is today. You know, I think you folks have been a little bit offended by your personal opinions. And it is just that, it is personal. You know, I don't post on my Facebook page when I personally think of your tie or what, anything, you know. Your personal beliefs don't impact me. At the end of my day, when I go home, I really don't care what you personally believe. What I care is that a Commissioner for the largest county in the Commonwealth is able to project and communicate to the public that we are a embracing county, that we value all people. You have the audacity to begin every meeting, reading the pledge, you do the Pledge of Allegiance. The last two words in that Pledge of Allegiance, I recall no asterisk. It says, "for all." All means people of color, members of the LGBTQ community, persons with disabilities, skinny women, fat women, men, children, everybody. Yet you have the nerve to stand and salute that flag and spew the toxic antiquated rhetoric on your personal Facebook page about the display at the library. I encourage you, sir, first, I'm glad to see your knuckles aren't all band-aided, because with that mentality, knuckle dragging a little bit, it really needs to come up to speed. You know, this is 2021. And I would also like you to just think about your words. All everybody in this room, think about language. Language affects our thoughts. Our thoughts affect our beliefs. Our beliefs affect our feelings, and our feelings affect our behavior. That is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm a little tall. My name is Rebecca McEnany. And R-E-B-E-C-C-A. M-C-A-N-A-N-Y. I am a member of the Comming County Community. But I also am a librarian of a small rural charter school in Clinton County as well. We are a K through 12 school. So, I came out here in support of my fellow librarians at the James Brown Library. A library is there to educate people and have free access to information. It opens people's eyes and minds to new ideas while employing experts to help these minds find information. I am proudly standing here as a member of the LGBTQIA+ community. We have had a fight for every right that has come easily for other people. That heritage should be displayed proud in public areas. The fact that it is displayed in a library, displays no free ideas, is just not only a good idea, it might actually help young people. Young people of this community need to find themselves reflected in literature. It's how they grow. They need to know that they are accepted for who they are and not what others expect of them. If they are not accepted, then you lead to depression and eventually ending their life. I was hired after a period of time through, before my school, after not having no librarian. The library was out of date, not a lot of diversity, and in the last four years, I've worked hard to acquire books for all communities. I am most proud to expand the graphic novel collection and the LGBTQIA+ community. My library is a safe area where students can come and check out a book without fear. I am humbled that a few students actually chose me to come out to. They know that I'm a member of this community and I will support them. A library is a safe space where ideas and people should be accepted for who and what they are. It's a place where people can express themselves without being bullied. Access to books is only the first step to a work stepping role. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. It's the afternoon right now.
Yeah, yes, it is.
My name is Linda Morris, L-I-N-D-A, O-R-R-I-S. And I've been a resident of Williamsport since I moved here in 1976. Um, so I'm a taxpayer and a voter. Um, I had been away visiting a daughter who had some illness down in Maryland. And when I came back to town after a week, I started catching up on my email and found all the dispute going on about the library. And I'm an active volunteer at the James Brown Library as well. And so, um, I decided to come to this meeting, but before coming to the meeting, I decided to go to the children's room and read, as other people have said they'd done. So I picked five books on the display for Gay Pride Month and read them. And, you know, I did not, I thought they were pretty basic books about love and belonging. Um, and even if your family is different from what most view as a traditional family, I did not find them as an attempt to indoctrinate, which is a pretty strong word, to anyone in any specific field, so. While some of the public and two of our county commissioners object to the display of these books, I suggest a library's choice to include these books in their display. The library function is to serve as a place that welcomes and serves any and all members of our community. That's a pretty special mission in this day and age, and this should be preserved above all else. Um, too many of our young people feel unwelcome and isolated, and we've certainly heard that today. Um, obviously, there are other kids who appear, often kids rather, who appear different in some way from their peers. And those often are the kids who suffer from depression and anxiety, again, which has been talked about earlier from speakers, and who may even consider suicide. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we could educate our community to be less judgmental in a negative sense? Or fearful of people who appear different from what seems to be the normal societal family? For this to happen, the education needs, I believe, to start at a young age. Kids don't cloud issues like adults do, and if kids were left alone, they'd often work it out just fine. And if they didn't, they'd ask parents or somebody they trust for answers. But unfortunately, it's parents who often pass on their biases to their kids and their fears to their kids. And then that's concerned at a very young age, and that's why I think it's very appropriate that this type of book be in the children's section. I propose leaving it to our trained professionals in the library to identify what is or is not indoctrination, as opposed to age-appropriate education. I feel that a request to be just put on the shelf rather than on the display is not much different from asking someone to go back into the closet. Um, I believe that if we pressure the library to read new books on a specific topic from the display, it will be the start of a disturbing trend of enabling the public to object to anything they personally find offensive. We all have different biases. We all have different fears. We have different concerns. I might be offended by some topics that are not a concern to you at all. But I don't think that my personal concern should govern what the library would put on the display. So I propose that, since we very seldom agree that, and what is a concern or what we should be fearful of and so forth, that we should just leave it to the library hired, trained professionals to make this determination.
If, if people have written comments that they want to submit to the record, you can give it, I see a number of you walking away from the podium with comments. I know Ms. Downey gave hers. You can just give it to Amin Ebner, who's in front of the computer. They will be put into the record, uh, verbatim.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Sarah Metzger and Mervito. Thank you for allowing us all to be here. Um, my name is Jeremy Mohler. It's M-O-H-L-E-R, and it's spelled J-E-R-A-M-Y, like Jerami, phonetically correct. Um, I'm from Trout Run, Pennsylvania, along with Carol. There, Karen, I'm sorry. A little nervous.
Go ahead.
Anyway, um, I'm forty-four years old, and I came out of the closet at twenty-five after I fell in love. I've known ever since I was five, six years old, um, that I was different than the norm. Um, I was raised in an evangelical Christian home. My parents weren't really like this about it, but my church was. And if you're in evangelical church, you know the Bible is taken literally. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. If you're evangelical, you take that thing literally, because it's the Word of God, absolute. Well, come to find out, that's not true, because God is a lot more diverse than that. Um, so I came out and I struggled, even today, to accept myself from all the imprinting, negative imprinting on myself. And it does not help when we have leaders that exacerbate that with comments of not thinking. Is it true? Is it helpful? Is it inspiring? Is it necessary? Is it kind? That's the litmus test. Anything we say should pass. I work in a school with another, um, woman that's in this room, and those are things that we teach them, and they're young kids. And it builds character in them, because they learn to think with their head before they speak, and they don't let their feelings dictate their truth. Their truth should dictate their feelings. Okay, just because we're sad about something doesn't mean we have to be sad forever. It's an experience. We all have different experiences in this world, and each one is as valuable as anybody else's. And the experience of having a display at a library that celebrates a certain, uh, population that has been under the radar or been oppressed for so long, I think it should be celebrated. Not the first thing is judgment. You know, that's our problem. We judge, judge, judge. We don't like to be judged, so why would you judge? So that leads me to say that I forgive you for the mistake that you've made. I forgive you and I still love you, because I was there before too. You know, I felt it's being pushed on me. Christianity's being pushed on me. Being straight's being pushed on me. I get it. No one likes to have things pushed on them. But we're in it together, you know? I love all you people, and I don't even know you, you know? I'm a peacemaker, and I want to see peace in this country. We, for far too long, we've had people that are in power that aren't kind. Words matter. Words matter. If you can't pass that litmus test, then don't say it. Think before you speak. That's the only thing. Think before you type on Facebook. Trust me, I'm guilty of it all the time. You know, and but I hold myself accountable, and I apologize when I do something wrong or I make a mistake. So hopefully, I'm an inspiration that we need to have peace here, and it's by getting together and having civil discourse. Not vitriolic diatribe like our previous president, excuse my going there, but we need leaders that are opposite of that. We need leaders that are loving, kind, caring, but yet courageous to stand up for things they know to be true. Not how they feel, what they know to be true. Thank you.
My name, hi, my name is Summer Bukovic. Summer spelled like the season. Bukovic is B-U-K-E-A-V-I-C-H. B-U-K, it's okay. E-A-V-I-C-H. Okay, I did not win the last name already. So I have some, and I'm from South Williamsburg. I'm not sure if I mentioned that. Um, as an ally to the LGBT plus community and a trained Safe Zone ally at my workplace, I'm thrilled to see such a large turnout here today, especially of young people. I really am thrilled. Um, I'm the mother of a young child for whom the books on display at the James V Brown Library have been written. I'm excited to take her there to read them later this week. And also, I'm a local community member, very active, and I vote in every single election. I watched last week's meeting, the entire meeting on YouTube, and I was struck by a couple of statements from Commissioner Metzger and, is it Musar? Commissioner Musar, that seemed to imply that the majority of the community would take issue with the Pride Book display at the children's, in the children's room at the James V Brown. I wondered was somebody would think this to be true, okay? Um, you know, that, that the whole community would have a, a problem with the display. I want to make sure that we're all aware of the social media bubbles in which we live today. Okay, that's what I'm speaking to bring everyone's attention to, okay, because this is a problem that really was exacerbated by social media. So in case anybody didn't know, excuse me, we are not merely users of so, social media. Rather, we are products to be bought and sold. Advertisers purchase access literally to our eyeballs, and the more eyeballs, the more advertising revenue for Facebook and other social media websites. So what does this mean for us and why is that relevant here? Well, Facebook has a vested interest in keeping our eyeballs on Facebook for as long as possible, and they do this best when they serve us content that keeps us engaged. For many of us, that means we tend to see content from similar others. People who are like ourselves, people who have similar opinions about things, not, uh, people with strong ideological differences. Facebook in particular tricks us into thinking that we have our finger on the pulse of the community, but we often don't. We often don't. We may think that our own social circle, online or off, represents the community at large, but this is not the case. So today, I'm here to call for everyone, the Commissioners and the members of our audience today, to ask yourself a couple of questions. To what extent is what I see on social media a true reflection of reality? To what extent do the comments on my posts or Commissioner Metzger's original Facebook posts, to what extent do they actually represent the opinion of the local community? Are they truly representative of the community's opinion, or are they simply representative of, you know, the Commissioner's, uh, immediate social circle? Okay, is social media or even your in-person social circle concealing something from you? Facebook makes it far too easy to dismiss the people and the ideas with whom and with which we disagree. We can delete friends, block acquaintances, snooze people temporarily, or make our posts friends only to limit the people who can comment. And it might feel good in the moment, maybe lower your blood pressure for the day, for sure, but it has some serious long-term consequences. It divides our community and it forces us into these dangerous partisan and ideological bubbles. Worse yet, it distorts our very perception of reality, the reality of the world and the community in which we live. So to the Commissioners, I hope today's meeting has opened your eyes to a reality that had perhaps previously gone unseen. You see that reality in our room today. And to those here in the audience today, especially those young people with such inspiring messages that I listened to via the North Central PA News Feed when I had to run off for an appointment, and I came back here. Um, I hope this is the beginning of your greater involvement in matters of local government, so I thank you all.
Morning, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Robert Iacuzio. That's a back-to-back terrible last name to be spelled. I-A-C-U-Z-I-O. I live in Williamsport. Um, mind you, I may be a little scattered, because I had absolutely no intention of speaking today at all. Uh, I feel like there are plenty of voices here that need to be heard other than mine. I just wanted to point out two things. First of all, the biggest thing for me is, as elected officials, I believe it is your guys' responsibility, the attitude that can be given to some of these people in the LGBT community, which admittedly, I am not a member of. I have two young girls. Whenever my four-year-old is on the playground, playing with a little boy, the first thing other parents say is, is that your little boyfriend? No one ever questions it. That's okay. So by telling me that that is acceptable, but these books are forcing or indoctrinating, seems slightly hypocritical. Now, on top of that, these are all learned things, and it is our job as our generation to teach these kids a better way, to teach that the youth don't have to feel the way they do. Now, my only other point that I really, really found important to make here was in response. Now, in your post, you said this is not an attack on the LGBT community. It's not an attack on the library. There was another speaker. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies, sir. Uh, yes, you said it's not an attack. Uh, there was another speaker here that said, I, I, I am, it's not a, I do not have a problem with, with gay people. You can say that, but I can also say, I'm not speaking at the Commissioners' meeting right now, but I am. It's, it's, just because you say something is true doesn't mean all the context surrounding it isn't. The only other significant point that needs to be made is, and I am pleading with the people here, the patriots, you, sir, I'm sorry that I got heated as well. My issue is, that fifteen-year-old young person came up here and said, four years ago, she tried to kill herself, and today, this was a milestone moment for her and her growth, and you came up here and condescended to her, and that is not the message. We need to be speaking to these kids. We have to empower. I don't want to go to her funeral. And the problem is, is I, I'm speaking for myself, but I firmly believe that I'm not the only one. We live in a world now where these kids walked in and saw you guys wearing American flags and felt intimidated. And that is not the country I want to live in. That is not the country any of us want to live in. Patriots fight for freedom, and that girl has the freedom to say what she says, and they have the fe, the freedom to feel how they feel. So you can have your opinion as well, but please, let's try to make this country more inclusive for everyone and not present the flag as something that we use to, uh, divide. inclusive for everyone and not present the flag as something that we use to divide because that's not what it was meant for. Thanks, guys.
Rick Hauser, Loyola, South Carolina. There's been a whole lot said here today, and there's been a lot of points, valid points made, there's no question about that. First, I'd like to say a little bit, apparently, the flag, the image of some people's psyche and such, isn't it your flag too? Aren't you all Americans? Aren't we all Americans? I would hope we could at least agree on that. And in agreeing on that, that I can say from my own personal experience, because I spent almost thirty-five, actually close to forty years in the music business, I have a lot of gay friends, a lot of them, from Atlanta all the way to New York City. And I'm going to tell you something. We have more commonalities than we have differences. We have things that press us to have differences. And I would tell you, as well as anybody on our side, to be on guard for those things. There's never been a time in the history of this country where we've been spiced and diced and damaged to the point that we have been today, all of us. Not just us, but you. And to make the point that everybody is monolithic is a mistake as well. Your flag has a lot of colors on it, the LGBTQ flag. Beautiful. It looks great. But understand that there are different colors to everything. There are different colors to... We patriots, we don't all agree on everything, but we agree on being Americans. And I think that's the cohesion that we have to get back to. Where we have a problem, folks, and please understand this, because some of you may not know this. It's possible not everybody gets every snippet of news every day. Not everybody can see everything that's going on. We all have our choice of purveyors of news. Most of them are woefully untrustworthy today, and that's another thing I'd like to impart to you. Getting the truth today is tough. It's very hard. The only thing that you will be told is why you should hate me and why I should hate you. That's what we get a spoonful, we get a truck full of it every day. Why I should hate you, why you should hate me, and what we stand for. Let me tell you something. We have to get back to cohesion, and the problem that we have, and the visibility that we have, is there are forces bigger than any one of you and any of us that are out there dedicated to the proposition of destroying every institution in this country, and they'll take you down along with me. Understand that. We have common enemies, you and we, have common enemies. And that enemy, again, is dedicated to the proposition of destroying us from the inside out by creating angst, by creating anger, by creating attacks on each of us. And what's going on now is, we have a situation, and I'm going to digress a little bit, at the library. All right? There's books up that speak of a certain lifestyle, et cetera, and they're geared to kids. Some of those things are designed to proselytize youth, to have a certain feeling about a certain lifestyle. Some kids are susceptible. Some of you know early. I know this. I grew up. We all did. And we all have questions, sometimes before we hit puberty and definitely by the time we hit puberty. Is there anybody here that hasn't been confused at the process of growing up? Is there any person here that didn't have questions as you entered your early teens, maybe before that, about who you were? That's part of nature. But it should be discovered on a personal basis and not dictated through books or Drag Queen Reading Hour or any of those sorts of things. Those things are not appropriate for youth. You need to discover yourself, and you need to understand yourself, but it shouldn't be directed or proselytized by anybody, whether it's of a religious bent, whether it's of a lifestyle bent, or any other situation. That prospect is a dangerous one, and I want you to please to consider that and understand it. Because again, this isn't a room full of us versus them. It's not we versus you or vice versa. Understand, we have commonalities. When we leave here, we serve each other in businesses, we talk to each other on the street, and analyze who we are. Why is this a problem? And I take some umbrage with the thought or some of the statements that were made that somehow, this is the greatest county to live in, but at the same time, we're horribly bigoted, you have to steel yourself away at night at three in the morning to go someplace because you're going to be chased by torch and pitchfork-carrying bigots that are going to hunt you down and kill you. Well, please, that doesn't work. We don't do that. There's no history of that going on here. Certainly not in the last fifty, sixty years. Yes, there were problems at one time, definitely. But I think we're well past that. But to talk and to say that our community and our civilization is at a point now where it's never been worse on the bigotry is absolutely a fallacious statement to make, and I have to at least make that point. We are not those kind of people. We don't seek to damage others. We just want to have something for our youth that when they grow up, they can grow up unencumbered by anything or any philosophies, especially sexual ones, that are not appropriate for a specific age group. And to harken back here for a little bit and just take a piece of a song, "The Wall" by Hank Floyd, and kind of paraphrase it, yes, I would say, for the drag queens, leave our kids alone. I thank you.
Gay mafia, hell, again.
Morning, morning or afternoon? Good afternoon, commissioners and audience. My name is Don Peters. I'm the pastor of the Gospel Weekers Disciples in Jersey Shore, Pennsylvania. Before I really even go forward, the conservatives in this group, I haven't prepared anybody for that, but I want to ask the conservatives in this group only, if you would be willing to give your shirt off your back for a member of the LGBTQ community in this room or anywhere else, if they were in need, would you raise your hand if you would do that? Thank you. Anybody from our community that would not do that, raise your hand. Frankly, I want to know. Could my wife, well, not associate, nor will I, nor will the people that I associate with, associate with anybody that would not give you their shirt off their back? I just want to be clear about that. This communication is an important thing. Jeff, I think it was his name, he brought it up earlier. It's so important we understand where each other's coming from. Okay? So this is one of the kind of ways they grab a word here, okay? I have a cousin, he's homosexual since he was a teenager. I love the man. He's my flesh and blood, so this isn't about that. But I want to just, as I go forward here, we're here to talk about a pride display. That's what I'm here to talk about. Now, the comments on social media, I'm not really real too familiar with them, so I'm here to talk about a pride display. When I was in college, my favorite class was logic. And what happens in discussions and conversations is what comes across is what's called a red herring. And a red herring is that, I believe it comes from when someone was being tracked by the dogs, they would take a red herring and run it across the trail and then run the people off course. We're not talking about whether we should have these books in our library. As I understand the conversation, we're saying, should they be promoted in the children's library as a pride display? I want to just keep to my opinion as a conservative. Gentlemen, I appreciate your backbone for taking a stand. And this standing, and again, to the LGBT community that's in this room and those you represent, certainly well organized, you got the word out, we kind of got on board late last night. Well done. I've got to give you credit for that. But all at the same time, we're here to offer our opinions and our perspectives. I believe that you did represent at least an object into the pride display. I believe you did represent this community and our values, our many whole Christian values. The gentleman at the back, he was seated at the end of the table, he talked about, I grew up in the church, is he still here? I'd love to talk with him about, he and I have differing views on the Word of God. The Word of God is the Word of God. I'm not interested in any law. I'm not interested in what people say. It's the gospel of Jesus Christ. And what does it say about our lifestyles and what should it reflect? Does anybody hold it perfectly? It's never happened except for one man, Jesus Christ, amen, churchgoers. That's right in the money. But I want to say this, and I'm going to really summarize and finish. I wonder if the librarian would allow a Second Amendment display at a gun ownership display. I want to tell you something. A lot of comments have been made about the librarian. She works for you. And you ultimately, it's facial, not demeaning, you work for the people of this county. She, I guess it's a she, he or she, they're accountable to you. They have a right to receive instruction from you. Let's be clear on that. You've done your jobs, and I think you've done well. Probably won't see a Second Amendment, but we probably won't see a heterosexual display there either, the benefits of being heterosexual. We probably won't see that there for some reason. We probably won't see a honey display there because it's controversial. We probably won't see a pornography display there, and rightly so because it's demeaning, especially to women. We won't see a polygamy display there. We won't see a pedophilia display there, although the members of NAMBL would love that. And you know they live in our community. And we shouldn't see those things. Those are personal lifestyles. Some of them are legal lifestyles, but there are personal lifestyles that should remain personal. We should not make public the private lifestyles of others and put them on public display as an endorsement. You've made the right decision, guys, to stand your ground. You've done well. And again, I'm just going to say in closing, you people of different mindsets, I don't agree with you, but I'll tell you what, as I said before, I will give you the shirt off my back, and these people will too if it's needed. We're going to knock them to agree on these topics, but I just appreciate the backing. You're taking a stand, sometimes, just like you're doing out here. You got to take stands. Well done, gentlemen. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joanna Baxter. I'm a recent graduate of Williamsburg High School.
How do you say your last name?
B-A-C-K-N-D-R.
B-A-C-K-N-D-R?
Yep.
Take a deep breath, you're okay.
G-I-A-N-N-A.
I know you're nervous. Take a deep breath, you're okay. I want to hear what you have to say, we all do. We appreciate your opinion.
All I have to say is that love is love, and this isn't about sex. This isn't about your gender.
Breathe, baby girl.
I'm not here to hate on anything, but I didn't choose to be this way. No one chooses to be gay or anything, but you choose to own guns and you choose to hunt. I choose to live, and I don't want my life taken because of someone else's choices. Thank you.
Joanne Rinker, Orion County, Georgia. I listen to everybody here, and it's my heart because I see how this subject is so important for so many. So I want to give you the view of a grandparent who is a Christian, and I learned most of what I live by now from the Old Testament as well as the New Testament. Like somebody said, the New Testament is very strong about love and how God is love. And I'm accountable to that God I love to tell people the truth as I know it. And I'll tell you about an experience I had when I was six years old, but he was only five, I believe, four or five at the time. And we're sitting there eating, and he's having his food, and he goes, "What animal is this?" "It's a chicken." And then he asked about beef, and he asked about pork. And I was like realizing, oh, no, he's heard about the vegetarian. He's like, okay, so he's hesitated, I eat those chickens. And I said, "It's okay. If you want to eat that chicken, you can eat that chicken. God gave us permission." A good thing I had read Noah, this account of Noah, because we actually did Genesis in BSF. So I brought him right to the scripture, and I said, "See, when that flood ended and they got off that ark, God said, 'You can eat anything He wants. If you want to eat chicken, you can eat chicken.'" Well, when I heard about this display at that library, all I could think of was that chicken conversation, that I don't want to have that chicken conversation with my grandson about people who choose a different lifestyle than me. Because then, it creates controversy. So I agree that there's age appropriate for everyone, and children can't handle the controversy right now. They're going to get cruel, they're going to do all kinds of stuff, and I'm obligated to tell my grandsons what I know and what I know to be the truth. And the love of God, yes, but he's not for murder. He's not for theft. He's not for burying false witness against your neighbor, lying, you know? He's not for a lot of things. So I got to be honest on all accounts. So I appreciate the commissioners saying, "Take that display that is so obvious to those kids and put it somewhere where..." I can't quite stumble across it. That might be God's will, that they do, that they find out something that they have, you know, an identity that they have, you know, that they didn't know they had. I don't know about that. I only know that Jesus Christ died for my sins, and He set me free from all that. And He gave me His Word, and He is the great I am, and He is the Word. And so I live by it, and that's what I'm saying. Think about what you're saying and think about what we're saying. We don't need this controversy at the elementary school level. Never mind the junior high, they're a mess, the middle school. I'll be honest with you, I think the creation of middle schools is a communist plot against the United States of America. High school, maybe, okay? But let's just, that's the issue. That's the way I feel. I appreciate you guys, appreciate you all. God loves you. I agree with that message.
Hello. It is afternoon. I'm Michelle Hazel. I live in Williamsburg. I did not come here to be prepared to talk. However, I have listened to every single person in here. Some things have irked me a little bit. Some things, I'm like, yeah, you got that right. Most of all, I have to agree with Joanne on most of her points. Jesus loves everybody. Doesn't matter if you're black, white, purple, green, or yellow. Doesn't matter if you're the rainbow. Doesn't matter if you like boys, if you like girls, if you like both, if you like none. He doesn't care. Although He does preach in His Word that man is man and woman is woman. Now, do I believe that if you're in that community that you should be targeted? Absolutely not. And if anybody ever had a problem or got targeted, you better come right here to me because I will stand up for you. Okay? You do not, you have to understand that we're a lot of old folks. I mean, I'm not that old. We're all folks, okay? And it's conversations, like Joanne said, "I don't want to have that conversation with my five-year-old granddaughter. I don't know how to have that conversation with my five-year-old granddaughter." My best friend, all through my childhood and into my adult life, was gay. And guess what? Girlfriend here had absolutely, positively no idea. Had no idea. I just thought he was a sweet guy. I was like, dang, the man can sleep in the same room with me and not even touch me. What an awesome dude. I had no clue. I was seventeen years old, okay? So I understand that it's younger and younger and younger every year. I understand that. However, you have to look at our points of view, okay? Like, I'm listening to this one here, who, by the way, I do like his shirt. I don't like that word on it, but I like his shirt. Okay? However, I'm sorry.
Her shirt.
Sorry. That shirt. It's his choice. It's his choice, but do I know how? Okay, look, okay, now, we listened to every single thing that y'all had to say. Every single thing. And not one of us interrupted anybody. We let you talk, we let you say how you feel.
I'm not going to let you misgender me.
Okay, honey?
That's simple. I won't let you misgender me.
Okay, yes, this is me, all right? Listen to me, okay?
May I speak?
I'm sorry.
It's public comments. Don't speak to us.
I'm sorry.
Speak to us.
Okay. Basically, what I'm here to say is, I understand where they're coming from. I absolutely do. I absolutely do. And again, if anybody ever felt threatened, come find me, because I'll fight right there alongside you. Right alongside you. However, I also feel that you had a point that I don't want to have that conversation with my five-year-old granddaughter. I don't. Maybe if I knew more about it, maybe, but I don't think that a five-year-old should have to choose which way they want to go. They just want to be five, they just want to play. I have a five-year-old that I used to babysit who loves to play with dolls. That doesn't mean he's going to grow up to be gay, it means he likes to play with dolls. He's gonna be a great daddy. Whether he's gay or not, he's gonna be a great daddy, because he knows how to take that baby doll and take care of it. That's what I have to say. But I also do not want to have that conversation with my five-year-old granddaughter. I'm not prepared for that. Maybe at ten, maybe at eleven, maybe. I would prefer that they know exactly where they're going. And that's all I think that, that's what I think that comment was meant to say. I don't think it was meant as, "You're a horrible community and you have no right here." I don't think that was it at all. I really and truly don't. I think it was just, we need to be a little bit more conservative. But that's not saying you are not allowed to have your say. You are, you absolutely are. This is a free country, Jesus loves you, and you can talk just like I do. You have the same rights as I do. However, some of us feel that we're not ready. We don't want to have that conversation. If they discover that, that's awesome. Let them, let them come to me, come tell me that, you know, how they feel or what they want. But that's not, the books are there. But honestly, I don't see the Bible out there. We don't have a Christian day. We don't get to celebrate things like everybody else does. Our values and our morals are getting pushed to the wayside, and that's not fair to us. You guys, you know, everybody in the community wants their own fairness, but yet my views are bad, and that as soon as I said that I would have a hard time, because I do not know that person right there. I don't know them.
Her.
I said them.
But her.
Her. Why do you have to constantly? Okay. I'm sorry. That's what, that's what I'm talking about. And I'm sorry you guys have to go through this, because honestly, you were elected officials, and I'm sorry, but I'm pretty sure that my vote, when I vote for people, goes on their personality and what they think, and how they, they take their personal beliefs and the ways that they do things and apply that. That's how they get in office. You want someone, if you are conservative, you want someone with conservative values. You want someone to protect your values. That's why they get voted into office. That's why every single one of us have a voice. That's why every single one of us have the right to vote. And that is why every single one of us should go to the polls and vote. So that you can have your opinions stressed. You should have your opinions done through elected officials. So, I stand behind, I don't think it went in the, like I said, I don't think it was meant as a mean thing. I saw a lot of mean and horrible comments on that post. Mean and horrible. That you talk about love and togetherness and kindness, and that's what you want? But yet, all of those comments were mean and disrespectful and horrible and make me go, oh my gosh, these are actually people in my community? Like you, the comments that were on there were unbelievable. I would never, in my entire life, say a comment to someone out of such disrespect. You, everybody wants respect. That's what those comments were. You're not disrespecting me because you want to take this down. Okay? I have been, I have I made my point?
Yeah, clearly.
Miss, yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry if you don't all feel the same way. I happen to love you no matter what.
Clearly.
So, that's. Excuse me?
Thank you, sir.
That's, thank you.
Yeah, I'm. Have a great day.
Is it Bella Marholo, Nelson? There's so much to unpack, so. I don't even know where to start. Uh, how, how do you spell your last name?
O-L-O.
And E-W, yes. So, most of the people who are opposed to this are worried about, why is there no heterosexual display? Why is there no Christian display? Because my community is still getting killed every single day in basically every country around the world for being who we were born as. You were right when you said, "God made me this way." God made me a woman trapped in a man's body. That's not my fault. So, you're worried about indoctrination. I'm worried about heteronormative and cisnormative societal standards being pushed on the community. You're worried about five-year-olds learning about gay people. I'm worried about five-year-olds killing themselves because they don't have someone to go to. You're worried about drag queens? I'm worried about the, the church. You're worried about drag queens because they touch kids? What about the Catholic pastors and priests who touch kids all the time? Nothing, not a word. So, you're worried, I'm worried about diversity, because I would rather a five-year-old have the knowledge and the ability to learn about this, so they can find themselves where they were born as and have the knowledge to be like, maybe this is what I am, maybe that's why I'm confused, than have religion shoved down their throats and then end up, end up killing themselves. That's why the LGBTQ suicide rate is so high, because there isn't enough acceptance. There's pandering to the community. "I'll give you the shirt off of my back, but don't touch me." Newsflash, we don't want to touch you anyway. So, you worried about there being a public uproar about this being in the library? I'm more worried about children. Not for people who are like me or like my community. I'm worried about the kids not being able to be who they truly are. Being stuck in a religion or a household or in a country that hates them, who doesn't fully accept them. Someone made a comment earlier about the flag, about it being intimidating. Because people who stand by that flag and are patriots kill people like me.
Oh, every day.
Not every day.
Constantly.
Seventy-nine trans people died last year. During a pandemic, seventy-nine trans women died last year. In seventy-nine countries, being gay is still illegal. In thirty-seven states, it is still legal for conversion therapy. But you're worried about your Bible, I'm worried about lives. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kay Nighting. That's the letter K, last name N-E-I-D-I-G. I'd like to tell you just how harmful stereotypes can be. As you might be able to tell by my appearance, I am gay. More specifically, I identify as a lesbian as well as demi-gender. I use they/them pronouns, and Kay is my chosen name, not my birth name, but it is my name no less. I am an active supporter of the LGBTQ plus community, and I am here to tell you, and I am here to tell you how harmful stereotypes can be. Before I realized who I am, I was homophobic. I was transphobic, and I am not proud of this, but it was still a part of me. I, I was these things because I was exposed to diversity. I, I saw these people as different than me, when in reality, I share more with them than I likely will with you. If I had to guess, if I had to guess, I'd say that two years ago, you went to Walmart and accidentally bought a pair of panties that were a few sizes too small. You told yourself that it was fine and you would fit into them, even, even though you still don't. Stereotypes can be harmful. My statement may have hurt your feelings or ego or whatever. People in the LGBTQ plus community, particularly the T part, are faced with many stereotypes that are more than hurtful. They are harmful, push, push, push harmful rhetoric, and most importantly, they are untrue. Stereotypes are harmful, and exposure to these people, especially early on in life, will help eliminate these harmful thoughts, ideas, and behaviors that I believe you have and are trying to inflict on future generations.
I'm Rigel Bechdel. That's R-I-G-E-L-B-E-C-H-D-E-L. I go by Rico. So, I don't think I have a whole lot to say here, but ultimately, my main point is, children are people too. We don't need to hide away these displays in the library. Children have every right to learn about what they want to learn about. And if you're concerned about not being ready for your child, to have a conversation with your child about a difficult topic, what if your child is ready before you are? Then what? Then what? Your child is more ready for this conversation than you are. Those people who are more brave and curious and willing to go forward and deal with difficult things, those are the people who should be representing our community. And those are the people who should be determining more than they are currently.
Hi there, my name is Mitchell Miller. M-I-T-C-H-E-L-L, M-I-L-L-E-R. I grew up in a church home. I was raised under the belief that man can only be married to women. I felt I was a freak. I knew that I liked boys and girls. I set up the worship lead for guidance. I was told that I should put aside me, who makes it who I am today, as safe, lock it, and throw away the key, because it was incorrect according to them. I lived for years as a false version of myself. I showed hatred to the LGBTQ, LGBTQ community, because I was made to hate my own identity. Once I had access to information affirming who I was, affirming who I am, I was changed. I was authentic. I looked at my actions and grew as a human. I'm sure that without the information I gathered, from the books I read and from the internet, I would still be fake and not the person I am today. I'm sure that there are kids today who are in similar situations as, as me. And I once met them, that whoever they are, whoever they love, whoever they identified as, they are valid. If I was not told that I was normal, that I was not, not a freak, my suicidal thoughts, my self-hatred, and my mistakes would be greatly subsided. Education cannot indoctrinate, only inform. Education can save lives. Keep those books up for those kids, let them find themselves. Thank you.
Guess that's another thing that comes with age. Um, my name is Sherry Burgess, and I literally ran here, as much as I can run these days. And I wanted to say that about banning books on gays and lesbians from the library, I was just totally astounded. I cannot even believe, I mean, what's next, burning books in the street? I mean, what is wrong with having education available to all, as long as that education is presented in an appropriate manner for your age? There's nothing wrong with that. It's not gonna, you take the books away from the library, you're not gonna get rid of all the gay and lesbian people. I spent twelve years in the United States Army. I was a frickin' drill sergeant. And I'm gay, and I've always been gay, and I will never be anything but. I just don't have that feeling for men. I try, I can't, I just can't. Now, I don't have those feelings for anybody, because I'm too gay. So I guess right now, I'm just like, no. I just have pot flashes all the time.
That's too much information.
TMI, I'm sorry, my mind is like an open book. But, uh, I just want to say that I oppose that. I don't think it's the right thing to do. I think it's a bad road to go down, and, uh, they proved that back in. We aren't, we aren't Nazi Germany, yet, and I hope we never will be. But I can tell you, I know this is a little off-subject. This country is heading down a bad road. And we need to stop the hate, and we need to stop the lying, and the people that believe in those lies. If they would just do the research, they would realize, what is at stake here? Our country. Our rights. We're losing them day by day. Here's another one. No more rights, no more rights in a library? Really, seriously? You're gonna take the books out? What is, what is the difference between that and burning books? In Nazi Germany, when they didn't want anybody to know about Christianity or anything else for that matter? I hope that this is not, that our country doesn't become an autocratic company, uh, country, and all those men and women that died to protect democracy. My father, the World War II veteran, Purple Heart recipient, Silver Star recipient. People, we need to wake up. And those people that are, that are against the Constitution and the, uh, democracy, we need to fight them. We need to fight them. We need to be prepared to fight them if we have to. Because if we don't, and we sit by, and we let it happen, then we have no one to blame but ourselves. And if I have to pick up a GD gun and go out and shoot my fellow man because they're fighting against the democracy and constitution that so many people died on the battlefield for, then I will, I will get a gun, and I will fight. And if it looks like I can't win, I'll go down fighting.
I want to thank you for your service to the country.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Did I even give you my name?
Yes. They said Sheri. Is it Shirley or Sheri?
Sheri.
Sheri.
S-H-E-R-R-Y. Just like the beverage.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Um, I was not planning on speaking today. Uh, my name is Morgan McAn, M-C-A-N-A-N-Y. Um, I am a member of the LGBT plus community, and, um, a lot of people have a lot of things to say today. Some I've agreed with, some I've been, been against, but that's why we're here today. Let kids be kids. Okay. Uh, let's not subject kids to an idea that we don't want to explain to them, because it's a difficult conversation. Let's take away Cinderella, because she falls in love with a man. But we can't have a book where two boys or two girls fall in love? Okay. Um, that was a little, I apologize. Uh, what really this comes down to is representation and acceptance. Uh, growing up, I had access to tons of movies, tons of books, tons of this, that, and the other, but there wasn't really anything out there where I found myself. You watch movies, you read books, you, you look for people that you can identify with. And in that, I never saw somebody who represented how I felt. And had the pride display been there when I was a child, I could have. Um, it's, we're not asking for anything special. We're not asking you to go out of your way and read the books. It would be nice if you did. We're just asking for acceptance and tolerance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hello.
I have Leanne Harcher, L-E-A-N-H-A-R, S-E-A-H-N-E-R. I also did not plan to speak today. Um, but I, after all this time, I'm not sure, uh, we're seeing many parts and minds being changed today, unfortunately. You've heard some emotional pleas for tolerance, but will we actually see these changes? We've heard messages about ideas being shoved down people's throats, but um, it, it's not that things are being shoved down your throat, it's that these things are now being brought out into the open. Do you think these are new ideas? Do you think these are new issues? Do you think members of the LGBTQ plus community have not existed before now? Um, Native Americans had a term for transgender. These are not new. These issue, these people were more accepted back in the ancient Greek times than they are here today. They're not new. This is not new. It's just now that members of this community are no longer going to hide. They're not going to stay in a closet. They're not going to go back. You know, they're out, they want to live their lives as they, in freedom for themselves. I don't think they're going back. This is not something to be threatened by. It's something to embrace. If you truly love people, then why aren't you listening to them? Why aren't you listening to these pleas that the gay are needing to hear them? Eyes rolling. Is this what Jesus taught? I mean, a more inclusive society is a loving society. If we all want to listen to Jesus, isn't that what he taught? So I have a question, I have two questions. I actually came up here to ask two questions. Number one, you say you give the shirt off your back for members of the LGBTQ+ community, which is nice. But if you're willing to give your shirt off your back for them, why not just simply allow them to live their lives in peace? It's so much easier. They don't need your judgment. They don't need... They don't need that from you. All they need is to let them live their lives as they see fit. And the second thing was, somebody said they don't know how to talk to their grandkids about these LGBTQ+ issues. Okay. So what if your grandchild is uncomfortable in his or her gender? They know this at five years old. My best friend, growing up, I think, you know, she always wanted the Ken doll. She always, you know, she seemed to be more comfortable with the trucks and the sports and everything. I'm sure she felt different. This was very young. Books like this in the library on display would have been so comforting for her. So how will you handle that? If your grandchild says, "I am not comfortable in this gender," don't you want to be able to say the right thing so that your child feels loved and accepted? That's what these books are there for. And if you're not comfortable with that, please read them, you know? And maybe you'll get more comfortable with those issues. So it's not about shoving things down your throat. It's an opening up. It's inclusivity.
Thank you.
I was not saying that I was uncomfortable with this conversation if my grandson brought it up. I was saying that in me telling him the truth as I see it, it would cause even more divisiveness. What kids aren't aware of, they're not gonna bully each other on the playground over it. So, but I would, let's say, my grandson, he can hug him, just, you know. But at the same token, if he's asking me a question just like the chicken, I'm gonna tell him, "You can eat anything you want. It's up to you." You know, except on the poisonous, obviously, or dangerous. But it's the same thing with that. I'm gonna tell him that sin is sin. I'm a divorced and remarried woman. Jesus forgave me and died for my sins on the cross. He's the reason I'm going to heaven. Sorry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Jeff Strowman. I'm from Woodward Township. I wanna say that I'm a patriot, and I'm not afraid of that. But I'm also a free American among other free Americans, friends and neighbors, and we are a community. And I'm glad we're here today. And I'm glad that this issue was brought up. I learned a lot listening to other members and friends and fellow Americans. I support your life, your liberty, and your pursuit of happiness, undeniably. I support, as a patriot, I support your lifestyle. I do want to speak directly by comments to Commissioner Maravido because I identify him as a voice on this board of commissioners who speaks for your group, who speaks for your way of life, who speaks for underprivileged and our social service programs. He is a voice, and he is a necessary voice in this community. And I respect him very much for that. And I think this community does respect that, Commissioner Maravido. But I do wanna lay out something that I didn't hear today. Our babies are a very touchy issue in our lives as parents, as grandparents, as family members. And I feel for them in this society that we're growing up in. And I feel for them. We are so divided as Americans right now. And I think it's for a bigger picture. A picture much bigger than what we're talking about today. We're Americans, we're free, we're neighbors, we love each other. We'll get through this. We got through tough times. We liberated Europe against tyranny and oppression. And that's what we're all about. And I know we will get through this, and I know we'll get through this as a community. It's dialogue like this that we need to continue to have. And it's diversity on a board of commissioners that we need to have. It brings people to the meetings. It brings the voices out. And I'm awful proud of everybody that's here today who took the time to come down and speak out, with the exception of those who prejudged and were disrespectful because that's not what we're about. And I think there was a display here today of people that were very, very level-headed at good points. But there was also a display of people that were not very nice. But that's for us to decide. The main thing I wanna say is that I think there was something today that was not touched on. And that's the role of parents. The role of parents comes first. You are the keepers of the institution. You are the keepers of the library, the court systems, the children and youth, and the welfare programs that are here to take care of when the family fails. But only after the family fails and after the parent fails. I heard some people today talking about stepping ahead of me as a parent and allowing regulators or people in a position of the library or other people to make that decision ahead of me as a parent. And I think where I'm a little concerned about this is I wanna be the person to introduce that to my children as a responsible parent. If that fails, I want you guys to step in with the services and with the professionals, the youth staff, that get a hold of those children who are troubled, who can't find that way through their family and through their parent. But I think where I, what I didn't hear today was that at that age and at that level in the library, there may be some concerns with parents that maybe that decision or that exposure is coming without them. And I think it should be first. And that's why I don't think anybody talks about banning books, burning books, removing books from the library. They talk about the presentation of a particular display that our children may see before we as parents can be the filter. And I thank you all very much for coming out today. I think it's great community. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Jenny Brown. No relation to James Lee. I just wanted to say I really appreciate all the comments here today. But there was something that I didn't hear. And I think a lot of us can look back at a time when we were kids and we went to the grocery store and we picked up a Snickers and our mom said, "Put it down." It's not the job of commissioners to parent children. If kids are in a library and their parents don't want them to have a book, they can say no. If these kids are too young, you say, to know these things, then you should be with them at the library. Are they walking there by themselves? No, you're with them and you're guiding them. My mom never let me check out a Dr. Seuss book, not for what you think. But because, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm so sorry, y'all. Hi, guys. My mom would never let us check out Dr. Seuss books because she didn't like to pronounce all the weird words in there. So we never got a Dr. Seuss book. And that's okay. We read a lot of other different books. And some of you who are worried that there aren't straight books in the library, I promise, there are many. I've read many of them. There are a lot of other books that people need. We've all had that feeling that we're different. And we found comfort in the library. And that's all that we're saying. You don't have to... We're not going door-to-door giving you books. They're just going to the library and making choices, and that's okay. And it's not the commissioner's job to decide. It's the librarian's job. And I think they're doing a great job. I think a lot of us agree. Thank you.
Okay, with public comment complete, we're gonna have Commissioners' comment this time and open with Commissioner Masari.
Well, I don't know where to begin. I'm gonna tell you. It was awesome. Okay. So, first of all, I'd like to thank, or I'd like to say to Jeff Strowman that Commissioner Maravido does represent those people and so do Scotty and myself, all the time. And I know you didn't mean that.
I did.
So, you know, it's, what's awesome is the fact that you had two commissioners who were willing to speak to the public about our beliefs and the beliefs that our constituents feel as well. You know, I believe that's important, that you have leaders that are not afraid to speak their mind. And not that we are right, but that we challenge each one's intellect and that we come to debate an issue. You know, for anybody to say that Commissioner Metzger and I were seeking to ban the books and burn them is absurd. There's nowhere in our comments that we would have said that. You know, as commissioners, we like to stir the pot on certain issues because that's what we do, to try to find commonality, to try to find a compromise, to, you know, try to find what's good for our community. And not how we should behave, but when it comes to taxpayers' money, it is our responsibilities to bring things forward. You know, I wrote my speech today. I'm going to read it. And I want you to understand that it may make some people uncomfortable, like many of the things that were said today. Most of the emails that we were sent were very nasty. They were very mean and cruel. And I would like to say to Jeff Brand, I appreciate you, right, speaking the way you did. It's frank, it's blunt. And I take no offense to that. Matter of fact, we should all be doing that. And for the young ladies, gay and fag, what courage it takes to come before your community.
And Isabella.
And Isabella. Yes, I was looking for that name, but I couldn't find it. For having the courage to come to our meetings or to a meeting and express the youth's ideas and concerns. You know, I read the paper this morning. I changed my whole darn speech. Why does the media write captions to divide us? Maybe captions sell papers. Why? When we hear the soldier, the, what was her name?
Sherry.
Sherry. When she says that "I will grab a gun and defend my constitutional rights", and you hear patriots say the same. How? How can we watch one news station and hate the other side? Phew. As scary is the propaganda we're being fed on both sides. Meeting can also mislead their audience into believing something that wasn't said. There are three examples of this in the paper this morning. "Freedom to Read Essential to Democracy As Library Display Comes Under Attack." The alternative caption could have read this. "Commissioner Masari Questions the Library Director: Should Young Children Be Exposed to All Forms of Sexuality at the Age of Five?" The first caption makes the reader believe Masari's against the First Amendment. I'm not. The second caption would make you believe he said that politely to the director. I did not. And bar, please accept my public apology. Secondly, "Mycoming County Commissioners at Odds Over Library Proud Month on Display." The alternative caption could have read, "Commissioner Masari Questions the Position of Materials Being Placed on the Display." The first caption makes the reader believe the two commissioners disagree with placing the pride display in the library at all. We do not. The second caption would make you question what material is on display. The third caption today is on the editorial page. "Commissioners' Position on Pride Display Misplaced." The alternative caption could be, "Should Commissioners Have the Discretionary Power to Fund the Library?" The first caption would make you believe the two commissioners are against displaying pride month at our library, and we are not. The second caption would make you wonder if there should be a line item on your tax bill to support the library. I don't think so. I think you should leave it in the hands of the commissioners because they have been very supportive of the James Lee Brown Library. As you can see, the paper today is leading its readers to believe two commissioners should shut up, conform, because we are misplaced or misguided. You would believe there was no other one who agreed with us. The citizens of the United States should begin to question whether large corporations and all of the media are trying to take away our First Amendment rights. Just as the LGBTQ+ community did, we all better fight like hell to preserve those constitutional rights that were provided to us by our founding fathers and proud servicemen and women of this country. I learned a valuable lesson from a high school senior while reading her essay. When citizens have the right not to be offended, our First Amendment rights will be taken away. And our Constitution will collapse within a short period of time. To the LGBTQ+ community, people that are like-minded as me are unwilling to voice their opinions in fear of retaliation and false accusations that will inevitably be made against them. Today's paper is a good example of that. Where do the taxpayers draw the line of support for displaying or promoting indoctrination of a certain material? Should that matter? To some taxpayers, it does. Some supporters say they will not financially contribute to our library when the library is advocating a particular subject matter. To those people, I say, continue to support this treasure we have in our backyards. And Mycoming County library system is arguably one of the best in the state. Many people are questioning why the LGBTQ+ community is pushing for removing the names of mommy and daddy, brothers and sisters,
It's non-binary.
uncles and aunts, boys and girls. They fear they rid their parental rights and control of their children. They fear that if legislation is passed to allow young children to have sex changes without They fear that if legislation is passed to allow young children to have sex changes without the consent of parents, irreparable harm can be caused by such actions.
Why is my body
Their fears are real, and there are many more agendas. You are advocating for that and may take more time to educate people on. You should be proud of your elected officials who are not afraid, one way or another, to voice their opinions publicly. This is what makes America great. Please do not crucify or censor us, because we have a difference of opinion other than yours. Do you believe we should be locked in a closet where the LGBTQ community was for way too long? I certainly hope not. Are you serious? Celebrate it. That's okay.
I ask for everyone, please be respectful when someone is speaking. We have listeners.
We have listeners.
Let the people speak, please.
Celebrate this month, you deserve it. Continue to fight for your cause. People are listening. However, be considerate to the people you may have a difference of opinion with. You have come a long ways since Stonewall.
Sheriff, if he interrupts me one more
Shee.
Okay, shee, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'd ask you kindly.
You have come a long way since Stonewall. To have a prepared speech organized one's thoughts, but to have an open dialogue without preparation brings out one's soul. A common supporter of the LGBTQ plus is organizing a meeting with the commissioners to openly discuss this and many other issues facing our blessed country and our blessed county. And I was not expecting this type of forum today. And this is the forum that this pastor wants to present. I think it's wonderful. I think we've all learned a lot today. I'm going to say, when I read those emails, there were a number of them that were criticizing us, but constructing. And so, I did go to the library. I did take out some of those books. And I did change my opinion on some of those books and that children's display. But not all. You know, I'm gonna leave you with this, and I hope you relate it to my, my speech. Is that we know a person that had a son. And they knew he was different. The son was gay. And he was confused, and so were the parents confused. And thank God the library is a resource for those books to be at, because it helped him out tremendously. But can you imagine? Can you imagine that if that child, at the age of 12, and this was eight when he first addressed his parents, can you imagine if that child had the right to start a sex change operation? Only to tell his father after reuniting with him after several years, that dad, I was a queer. I didn't want to be a woman, having relationships with a man. I wanted to be a man, having relationships with a man. How powerful is that statement? Very. That's why I oppose anything that could influence such a young child into believing that who's ever pushing this agenda is correct. That it's okay for a child to make such important decisions in life. Thank you very much, your best.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you, everyone, for your honesty. Those who, who want the display removed, and those who think the display should stay, stay. I, I want to thank you for your honesty. To be honest with you, I'm actually really sad. I'm sad because I feel as though, no matter how much we talk, we can't seem to really hear and understand each other. And, and I don't know whether that's because we just are human, and that's what the species does, which is why they wind up in wars sometimes, or if that's just because somehow we can't walk in each other's shoes. You know, for some reason, when I grew up, I tried to understand why is it that people will hurt other people? Whether it's the rise of fascism, or what happened in Chile in 1973 where people were abducted, or even today in Burma, where, you know, we, we, we like to think, well, the Buddhists are so peaceful, and, and Muslims are being slaughtered. And I've, I've tried to understand, how are we able to do things to hurt people? And seem to say it's okay? You know, a number of years ago, I was asked to speak at the temple. And I did so research, because I wanted to understand how ordinary people could stand by as their neighbors were taken. And so I did some research into some of the laws that were passed in Nazi Germany. And, you know, I want to, I thank Mary and, and John today for bringing that up. Laws that were very innocuous. A Jewish doctor can't practice medicine in this facility. And people stood by and said, well, that's okay. There's nothing really there that's gonna harm anybody. And so, you know, as I listened today, first of all, I want to thank you all for doing a lot of teaching to me, and for saying on all sides some, some very profound things. But I was trying to understand, as I listened to all of you, and I took some notes, because that's what I'm prone to do, about how it is that we can try to move into understanding where each of us is. Jeff, it isn't that I support one side or the other. It's that, at the end of the day, when I look at what happened in Germany, when I look at what's happened in Chile, and when I'm looking at what's happening in Burma, I realize that could be us. And so I don't want anyone to feel that anything is being shoved down their throat. But I do want us to realize that we're only human. And the truth is, and maybe that's with the Christian or the Muslim, or the Buddhist faith, or those who have no faith at all, but who understand that at the end of the day, we're all just human. And I think we almost need to remember that. And remember that what we say and do can hurt. And I don't absolve myself, I have said things, I'm sure. I know that it hurt people, whether it's people in my family, or whether it's people in my community. And it saddens me, but at the same time, I, I recognize, you know, that, that I'm human. I, I, when I listened to, to speak, to people speaking today, and they said, young man said he didn't come out until he was, not young anymore, but he's still young, he's 44, but he said he didn't come out until he was 25, and he said, "I had so much wasted time before then." How sad is that, so someone at 44 should look back and feel like before they were able to claim who they really were? When probably their life is over. And I can't imagine, I mean, I'm, I'm really pained by McKenna Long having to look out at a Confederate flag. Who knows whether the people across the street would ever do anything, or if it's only a way of them trying to say, "Hey, I want to be heard too, I believe in the Confederate flag." But then we have to say to ourselves, well, what do we believe in? Are we growing as people? Are we really growing in our understanding of people? Or are we sort of just locked into whatever it is that people tell us to believe? The woman who spoke about Facebook was so right on. That's about gathering data. And shame on us, that we allow people to gather data and use it to shape what we think or believe. But, but what happened, when I heard from McKenna, was, was sad. That, that made me really, really scared and worried. So, and, and, and listening, listening to the pastor and listening, I heard, this is the one thing that I would ask you to think about. I heard a lot of people say lifestyle. And then I heard a lot of people say, "It's who I am, it's not a lifestyle, it's the core of who I am." We have to try to think about that, because I think at the end of the day, that's part of what's separating us. Some of us think it's a lifestyle, some of us think it's the core of who we are. Maybe we're both right, and maybe neither of us is right. But the reality is that we have to live together. I mean, we have to live together, right? Not only do we have to, but shame on us if we don't experience each other in the short time we have on the planet. So, to the young girl who said, who, who the 15-year-old fame war, you know, she said that I should be at home doing stupid teenage kids instead of here telling us what to do. You know what, I don't know if you're still here today, but you're exactly where you should be, fey. Because someday, you're gonna grow up, and whether it's this issue or some other issue, you're gonna speak up, and you're gonna help lead people, so, so don't, don't feel like you're not here. I'll tell you, I had a child who's now 11, and when I saw the books in the library, if I didn't think at that point that I was ready to have a conversation with Rocco about that, I didn't have it. When, when, and my sister, who's older than me, and who happens to be a social worker, came to our house and was wanting to have some conversation, I politely said to her, "Hey, I'm not ready to have that conversation with him yet." And that's okay, and Jeff, that's my role as a parent. But I should also allow someone who wants to have that conversation to have the resources there. I mean, I, I, let's be honest with ourselves, if we can't divert the attention of a five-year-old in the library, then, I mean, to something else, whether it's the turtle that's there, or whether it's something else, then, you know, maybe we need to, to, to prac, to practice that. But I, I'll tell you, I think that we underestimate the role we play as parents in both teaching love to our children and teaching biases to our children. And we don't do it because we're bad people. And we don't do it because we don't want to, or intentionally, but we can do it. And, and that's biased in all ways. It could be biased against Christians. Could be biased against Muslims, biased against Jews, biased against Italians. Right? I mean, we'd be kidding ourselves if we didn't think that the struggle for people to have equal rights in this country was exactly that, a struggle. You can pick up newspapers from 1910 that say, "No Catholics need a plot." "No Italians need a plot." You know, as, as, as someone who grew up as a child of immigrants, parents who were, whose parents were immigrants, um, um, my grandparents, I understood and heard from them about things that were said, to all people, to all people. So, look, in, in some ways, I said to you that I'm sad, but at the same time, I'm incredibly hopeful. Because I think in our community, and honestly, I really believe that the only way things are gonna change in this country is if in small communities, we have conversations with each other like we did today. And honestly, for the most part, today's conversation was very simple. It really was. Let's not rip our, let's not beat ourselves up over the fact that people have strong feelings. Let's celebrate the fact that for how many hours? For three hours, everyone has spoken. Do we have all the answers? No. No, we don't. Okay, but the point is that I feel like we've made some progress. But what we maybe need to do is to have these groups of people spend more time with each other. So that people who don't look like you, or who don't seem to act or dress the same way you do, we're not afraid of them. That's, I mean, I, I don't have a profound answer for you, I, I wish I did, but all I can say to you is that I think that we have to continue to work together. As elected officials, you know, I fund, I vote to fund the library, because I think it's an incredibly important place. Not just for these displays, but for people to learn how to read. 65% of our folks in prison are illiterate. They can't read. They can't write. How does one make decisions if one can't read or write? What are your decisions based on? You know, so, I, I just want to thank you all for coming out, and I don't think my colleagues are suggesting to defund the library. I can, I can, I don't want to speak for them, but I can say that I don't think they are. I'll be honest, while I recognize the right of all of us to have different opinions, I think we all have to be cognizant of how we express it. Because getting back to what I started this with, dehumanization of people is how ordinary people end up supporting policies that kill people. You know, do you remember the issue in My Lai and the other, during the Vietnam War? Do you remember the term they used to refer to Vietnamese?
Yeah.
They were guks, right?
Yeah, they're wrong. Guks.
But my point is, i- isn't it interesting that we understand what language does to dehumanize people? What happens when women are abused? What are they called? Bitches, right? I mean, this is terms, language means something. And it's language that leads people to think that they're able, and have a right to take action against people that they normally, ordinary wouldn't take. Look at, look at Matthew Shepard. This is, this is the point that the folks were trying to make today. Matthew Shepard is the young man who was tied to a fence post in Texas, in a community just like ours. A very nice people who went to church on Sundays and raised children. He was tied to a fence post, and he was tortured, and then he was dragged behind a pickup truck until he died. So, I think we have to remember that it can happen here. And that's what people are trying to say, and the best way we can prevent that is we don't dehumanize people. We don't ask people to put hooks in the back of the, you know, on, on the shelf away. And we also just try to, in our own way, raise our children to love them all, so, thank you.
On Mondays, I take a half hour and a half, and I write down a prayer for the next day. And I, and the commissioners know I, I take this very serious. And before I do it, I ask God to give me the words, to speak through me. And sometimes it takes a while, sometimes it's supposed to be right away. But I did this yesterday, and these words came to me. And I'm gonna repeat them again. And firstly all, I want to acknowledge, I want, before we get into this, what we're gonna discuss, I want to acknowledge that the city this Saturday is recognizing Juneteenth. I believe 10:00 AM till 4:00 Friday. It's a very important day. And I've encouraged people to go to Brandon Park. And it helps, and, and celebrate, and walk around and talk about the meaning of Juneteenth and how important it truly is. I'll be there. I look forward to the ceremony, and I encourage residents of our county to attend also. So I want to repeat what I said earlier, just part of it. May we unite and foster racial, cultural, and community harmony. May we cling to you when our differences threaten to divide us. Father, we are all equal in your eyes. So let us not create strife or terror part of what you desire us to be. It is good, we are not one person, but one people. Each of us are important and plays a significant role for the good of society. May we use those talents to glorify you. We pray we will always show your love. Let us communicate each other with respect and dignity. I write these prayers, and I pray about them, and I pray for the constituents of this county, that we do the right thing. I'm a human being. We all make mistakes. But at the same time, we have a responsibility. And that responsibility lies within listening to all our people. I will not make an apology for my values or who I am. That's how I was elected. I treat people fairly, honestly, and without any kind of disregard or disrespect. That's who I am. That's my core values. That's how I got elected, all my core values. I love everybody, everybody. So I prepared a statement, I'm gonna read it. Because this is what this is all about. This is why we're here. Constituents ask me to examine the library display for Pride Month, specifically the children's section.
We went over. There was concerns from these constituents regarding books on display in that section. It was suggested by Commissioner Sarr under seeing these books, suggested, not ordered, suggested, that they could be located to a different area, not censored, not banned, not taken out. I didn't feel that was an unreasonable request. This children's section is designed to be a place where youngsters can browse without close supervision. The titles in question espoused a view on sexual identity that is best explored and discussed in a supervised family setting. And I want to talk about family today. Mr. Strowman talked about family, that's a lot of what I'm gonna talk about here. No demand was made, nor formal written complaint to the library. Those are rumors. It was suggested by an elected official responding to concerns of our constituents regarding an entity that receives county tax dollars. And let me tell you, during the pandemic, we received hundreds of calls asking us to interfere with things that we have no jurisdiction over, we have no say over. This we do because county tax dollars are involved. No commissioner intends to withhold the James V Brown Library funding. We never threatened that. I never said that in my Facebook, post, Facebook book, posting. I mentioned it because people say, why are the commissioners involved in this? Because it's tied to taxpayers' money. Never threatened withhold funding. Let me emphasize this to you. If it was in our group of constituents with concerns, we would share the same concerns with that entity if tax dollars were allocated. Whether it's with our beliefs or against our beliefs, we share the same concerns. We respect the James V Brown Library and the service it provides for all our community. I went there as a kid. I had a disability as a kid and that library helped me. The question of how to best educate and inform our children on our, on their sexual identity isn't gonna be answered by public displays or protests. It's best done and should be done in the home. If parents and children wish to explore the issue, the books are over there, they can go explore them. They should not, however, be given a special priority in a children's section that discusses sexual content. Much of the problem is that we've begun to politicize matters that aren't rightly political. Public opinion and pressure should not determine how a child decides on his sexual identity. Sexual identity, especially for children of tender years and talking kindergarten, first grade, is a matter to be addressed by families or custodians. There's no one up here expressing intolerance. We listened to thirty-six people today speak here, thirty-six. We, I've, I've received thirty-four emails. I think I've responded back to twenty-six of them, I'm gonna get back to everybody. I'm the only commissioner responding back to every email, so forth and back. Because I care what they have to say. Not that they don't care, if I don't have time, I've made, I've made extra time to make sure I respond back to them. They reached out to me, I've responded back. It is an intense, personal matter that should be handled in private with parents or custodians properly consulted if needed by a clergy person, a medical provider, an educator, or a library as a resource. It's simply a matter of common sense and common courtesy. Sexual identity is an issue that we should discuss as families or by a custodian, not by partisan activists shoving it down children's throats. Okay? Our kids are being bombarded with all kinds of information these days. It's very difficult to be a child. Let the parents and custodians make those choices. Let them make the choices. It's sad that we are currently in an environment where people can't express their views. True tolerance is listening to all sides and having an open discussion and dialogue. I saw people walk out today, as soon as somebody said something that's opposite of their thoughts, they walked out laughing. That's unfortunate. That's their choice though. That's their choice, but it's unfortunate they didn't stay. They, they got upset and left. We don't need to cancel each other out. Respect each other's views. Let's be kind to one another and reflect God's love, instead of saying, it's my right, it's my right, it's my right. Let's be kind and listen to each other. It's okay to disagree without resorting to hate and violence. Third thing, I have no animus towards any group or sexual minority. We are all God's children and equal in his eyes, that's how I live. I spent over three decades next door helping individuals from every walk of life, helping them through every imaginable problem. That's why I am in public service now, that's what I did for thirty years. Because I cared about people, no matter what you believe. I will always have an open door to anyone who wants to have an open conversation. And Jeff, the coffee drinker, are you still back there?
No, ran out of coffee.
I'll, listen, I don't drink coffee.
I should probably switch to decaf.
I'll bring my iced tea, we'll sit and have a talk.
Julie, I appreciate that dialogue.
Thank you. A parent will often tell their child that I might always agree with your decisions, but I'll always love you and support you. I will support all our constituents, including the LGBT community. I am in total agreement that LGBT community members should be given respect and dignity. There are many good members of that community. We need to be able to live in a community where no one, for any reason, whether it's a woman, any reason, color, sex, creed, is harassed or threatened with violence. No reason. We need to teach our youth not to call names. Commissioner Maravita shared last week what his son heard on the bus. Word, fat, that word bothers me. That bothers me. We have to teach our children not to call people names. That's a starting point. You do that in the home with the family. I did it with my children. I taught my children harmony. I still remember my son hugging one of his childcare buddies who was African-American, because he hadn't seen her for two months and they're hugging each other because they were so excited to see each other. That's wonderful. They didn't look at color. They looked at, they don't look at labels, we don't need to look at labels. There's more to a person than a label. What happened June twenty-eighth nineteen sixty-nine through July third nineteen sixty-nine at Stonewall should never happen again. I've read that history.